Scott's got the night renovation in the background.
Wait, what?
Principal Godshock, he has, if you take a look, he's got the night renovation in the background.
Right.
Just trying to, trying to represent.
I thought he was really standing out there.
Who says he isn't?
Well, to be honest with you, I was earlier today, but not, not right now.
Okay, we should be good to go whenever you are, Kaylin.
Such a quiet group when you're on mute.
I'm telling you.
Too bad I don't have a button like this in all meetings. Need just a couple more minutes, Kaylin. Thank you.
Give me time to finish dinner.
Anita, are you, do you have what you need now?
I'm, I do. I need a couple of minutes just to get it in here.
Thank you.
So another interesting news, I worked with some folks in Romania and they're gonna be able to go outside this weekend or something like that. But they have to fill out a form that says, why are you going out? Why do you need to go out? What's your reason? So.
That's crazy.
Yeah, so I explained to them, you know, like the United States and then how the different states, you know, some have almost no, no cases and they're not in lockdown and others like where we are, close to the epicenter in New York are terrible. But yeah, it was interesting to hear, oh, you have to fill out a form to be allowed and you have to have a good reason, I guess.
Is that like you have to carry it around with you or it's gotta get approval first?
I don't know. I'll ask him when I, I'm gonna talk to a couple of the guys tomorrow. I'll, I'll ask.
Yeah, like, do they have to fax it in and they have to get approval?
Let me see your papers.
Yeah.
Wanna walk the dog?
Yeah, I, I said, I don't know, I'm human and I should, I went out of my box. Isn't that a good reason? But yeah, we don't, we take it for granted what we got in this here beautiful land of freedom.
Yeah, well, they have Pennsylvania there and vampires.
Yeah.
Well, here's an, another interesting story. I'll share with you guys. My brother-in-law is stuck right now overseas. He's about four miles outside of Aruba. He left pre-COVID and he can't get home. No country is allowing him in. He doesn't know when he's gonna get home. The boat almost ran out of food. It's, it's crazy. So, but I, I was so frustrated. I made a bunch of calls to the State Department and trying to figure out like, you know, what, how are you gonna get this guy home? And they were just kinda like, I don't know, sorry.
On a cruise ship or just a?
It's a rig, an oil rig. Yeah, so hopefully he'll get home soon.
I just read, I just read, for some reason I got on a random email and I just read an email that was actually speaking to just that point. How many people are stuck?
Yeah, the countries are not even, even, apparently they went to Trinidad because they have people on the boat from all over the world and Trinidad won't even allow in their own citizens.
So he's, he's on a, like a cargo ship, correct?
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah, I was just, I, I'll forward you the email. I think I just deleted it, but yeah, they were just talking about that.
That's crazy. My poor sister, she works and has two kids, so she's like trying to manage it all by herself and I can't.
Stranded.
You know, crazy times.
They were able to get these people like food and stuff, right?
They were. Aruba, thank goodness, helped give them some food, but they're also not technically on any land, so they're kind of in international waters. So it's also a weird.
Aruba probably has a lot of empty hotel rooms right now, though, that they could quarantine people in.
So they ain't letting them in. They're gonna have to get like a hel, like some kind of boat to get them to a helicopter, to get them to Mexico, to get them to home.
It's crazy.
It is, yeah.
We'll keep stalling, Anita, don't worry.
Are we good?
We're the rodeo clowns. Like, it's like.
Thumbs up.
I'm getting questions and I'm getting texts. All right, I think I have it added. Let me just read them for, all right, I think. Thank you. All right, ma'am, we're ready.
All right, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Thank you all for joining us. It's definitely strange. I never thought I'd say I'd miss, you know, the boardroom, right? But I missed seeing you guys. So this is the next best thing. We did have an executive session prior to this meeting to discuss a personnel matter. And the first item that is on our agenda here is something that we're gonna continue to do for each board meeting. And that's the recommended action is the motion to suspend Board Policy 006.1, which restricts the frequency and number of board members participating in a public meeting via electronic communication as well as the restriction that prohibits the board president's presided any public meeting via electronic communications. Right now, we have that up to May 28th and of this year, so I will need a motion to vote for that.
So moved. It's John.
Now, second.
All right, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, the next item is gonna be our flag salute. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Okay. All right, Anita, I'm gonna move on to our roll call.
Mr. Anderson.
He is here.
I am present. Mr. Jackson.
Here.
Mr. Kern.
Yeah.
Mr. Akmanowicz.
He's here.
Here.
Ms. Weed.
Here.
Mr. McCucci.
Here.
Mr. Ramers.
Here.
Mr. Spear.
Here.
Ms. Mitchell.
Here.
Thank you.
Thanks. I just wanna let the public know that this meeting is being recorded via Zoom. And then the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minute, so I'll need a motion to approve the minutes from the April 9th meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Keith and Ron, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We're gonna move on to our first public comment of the meeting and Anita, just so I can set the stage for any of those who want to make any public comment, we are gonna allow the same as last time. We're gonna allow one public comment in the beginning and one in the end.
Correct, and I did have one individual request to speak ahead of time, and I'm not sure, Teri Sanangelo, if she has received emails or not at this point, we can talk to her about that. I do have a request to speak from Jan Detwiler.
All right, so I guess we're gonna, this format, we're just gonna allow people that, to do it the old-fashioned sort of new tech way?
Well, Jan's the head of Quespa, that's why we're.
Right, right, so go ahead. I see you're actually right here.
So I'm good?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. How are you?
Good.
My name is Jan Detwiler and I am the Quespa president, proud parent of two QCSD graduates and resident, and a lifelong resident of Quaker Town Borough. Tonight, I'm here to represent Quespa, which is your support staff union. I'm happy to be with you tonight, and I have to agree with Kaylin, this is not the way I would have chosen it to be. I would rather be face-to-face, but I guess this is our new world. I'm here tonight to very proudly say that Quespa members voted overwhelmingly yes to accept the tentative agreement with QCSD, and I hope that tonight you will do the same. Your support staff includes aides, food service, custodial maintenance personnel, and secretaries, all of whom continue to faithfully work hard through this pandemic. Approximately 80% of QCSD support staff are taxpayers and live within our school district. I'd like you to try to imagine a day or a week without these essential people. There would be no hot lunches for students, there would be dirty unsanitary rooms, there would be no extra support for struggling students, our phones would go unanswered, and there would be no person to greet you when you enter the building. Nationwide educational support professionals, or ESPs, make up 40% of all public, public school employees and provide the infrastructure for quality public education. I thought I'd give you a small overview of how we got to tonight. Zach and I began meeting last August. Meetings with Zach and the Quespa Executive Board began in October, and then we met, we began meeting with school board representatives in January. We had really good open discussions during those meetings and I was able to share my vision for this contract and a different look for negotiation meetings than the two previous contracts. I shared that I would like to see some out-of-the-box thinking for this contract, but never in my wildest dreams did I think we'd end up with a virtual negotiating, negotiations meeting in March, at which time a tentative agreement was reached, and then followed by a virtual presentation of that TA, and then online voting in April. That's not exactly what I was thinking when I said out of the box. I have a few thank yous that I feel are necessary. First, thank you to Mrs. Weed, Mr. Akmanowicz, and Mr. Jackson, who so willingly gave up their time to meet with us. I hope you've gotten to know us and to understand a little better what we do each day. Also, to my executive board, Scott Hendricks, Jen Hughes, and Mackenzie Baver. I tell them all the time that I couldn't do this job without them, and I truly mean that. I appreciate their support, feedback, and, and sharing their ideas. It's a great team to be working with. We had an outside committee. This group of people met monthly and helped the executive board drive the direction of the contract. Within that group, all support staff categories were represented. The people who served on this committee were Michelle Weisel, Lori Moyer, Denise Landish, Shari Weaver, Tanya Starry, Darce Schircheck, Roxanne Brandis, Erica Glazier, Dave Streepie, Harry Schultz, and Jay Detwiler. Thank you also to Dr. Harner, who asks me all the time, what do I need to do for your members? I really appreciate that. I also have some, some statistics for him because he has more numbers in his head than anyone I know. Nationally, 40% of ESPs have school-aged children. Two-thirds of them have lived in their community for nearly 20 years or more, and three-quarters of ESPs volunteer their time to community activities and organizations. And last, and certainly not least, to Zach, who didn't think I was a crazy lady when I told him my vision, who answered all my questions, and who always answers my phone calls or my emails, and who willingly gave up his time to meet with our members to review the tentative contract. Saying thank you doesn't seem like enough, but know how much I appreciate the hard work and time that you put into making this night happen. Again, thank you to the entire school board, to the, oh boy, made it this far. Thank you to the entire school board for your time and have a great night.
Thank you so much for sharing that, and it sounds like, while I wasn't really an integral part of those negotiations, that they went smoothly, which especially is not easy during this time. So thank you for sharing that. Do we have anyone else that we needed to read an email that they may have sent us or any other public comment?
Carrie just indicated she did not receive any emailed comments.
And if, if the public wants to send in a comment between now and the end of the meeting, can we remind them of that email address?
It's T-S-A-N-A-N-G-E-L-O at QCSD.org.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to the superintendent report. Take it away, Dr. Harner.
Thank you, ma'am. A lot of exciting things going on, even though most of us are, or almost all of us are stranded near our homes. Jamie Lynch is up first from Dewey Engineering. I can see Mike Spanifor is also with us. If you would, Joe, if you would tee up Jamie's presentation. Grab the, grab our slide. There you go. Jamie, you're up.
Good evening, everyone. Hopefully you can hear me and hopefully you can see a presentation. Maybe somebody can give a thumbs up, Kaylin, or someone can give a thumbs up, just so I know. Great, thank you very much. I have been told that I have 10 minutes to tell you all there is to know about how Nighting was running, was stopped, and then started again, so I'm gonna give it a try. I think this is a presentation that'll be up on board docs or on the board's website, so that folks will be able to see it, and so forgive me if I run through relatively quickly. But I'm sure that most folks are aware of the governor's order to stop work on the site. We closed up the site and buttoned things up as of March 20th, and then shortly thereafter, we were all in a process of following the bouncing ball as new protocols were put out, and all kinds of direction came from the governor, from the Department of Health, from OSHA, and even from the County Department of Health. The district was given the opportunity to decide whether it wanted to continue work at Nighting in a limited fashion, as the quote is in the letter. We got together with the district, the administrative team, with Chris, the facilities director, talked through the issues, and arrived at a new set of protocols for construction, you know, resume in that limited fashion. The contractors are very cooperative, especially Lowbar, and Lowbar was able to modify their safety protocols and resume work in, really in limited fashion as early as April 8th, and this is one of the earlier jobs that resumed, so, you know, really hats off to the entire team that allowed that to happen. Joe, should I say beep to go to the next slide? Great. We went real fast. Okay, so just as a history lesson, the project was on schedule for a August 14th substantial completion date. As of the March 20th, a suspension, there was work that continued in limited fashion, off-site in fabrication shops that, that happened to be open to the extent that it could, but we resumed on, on the 8th with Lowbar, and all of the contractors were back on site as of the 27th. Our HVAC contractor was the last to come back after he established protocols and brought his folks off layoff. Even to this day, however, the schedule impact, the cost impact remains unknown as we await the state's decision on how quickly businesses can, can resume. But it really is a testament to everybody that was involved with the project, Rob and his staff, Zach, Dr. Harner, the input from Chris Spear, and also from special counsel to get us up and running. Beep. Go to the next one. So, you know, at this point, substantial completion, which would be, you know, a certificate of occupancy for Nighting, which was to be the 14th, is, is really in jeopardy. You know, the impact of the interruption is greater than two weeks. You know, we're waiting for businesses to be up and running, and it's an unusual time, of course, but we don't know where all of the delays would come from. We understand typically where construction issues arise as we close out a project, but here, where businesses may be affected by the virus, they may still be closed, they may have shuttered completely. We're not exactly sure where any challenges will come from, and we're sorting through them now. Certainly with protocols for construction to be six feet apart, wearing masks, conduct additional cleaning and the like, we're not as efficient as we were. We don't know exactly how along those protocols will impact us, and as I mentioned, the supply of materials has been interrupted. The fortunate thing for Nighting is just about everything on the job has been purchased, and just about everything has, has actually been delivered to the site, so we're in fairly good shape there. Next slide, please. So there's some options that we want to assist the district on as we move forward with respect to opening Nighting, and three of them are here. We'll work with Zach and, and the administrative team, and I expect to give a little bit more detailed recommendation at the facilities meeting next week. But we could push for completion on time, in which case there's a likelihood that we may have to pay for strategic overtime in order to have contractors actually finish. If there are roadblocks that come up as we get to the end, we may have to expend some of the contingency in order to overcome that with additional labor. We could also consider a September move into the building when work is complete. I think that that's possible, being that it's a relatively small building, and we could move over a long weekend. It has been, it has been done before, and we could wait until December. However, that's probably too long, and we end up risking what's understood in the construction industry as extended overhead and costs related to taking too long, if there's such a thing to deliver a building, and we know that the, the school district is transferring ownership of Taken Valley to a new occupant. They have plans to get into that building this fall. We'd like to be able to extend them every courtesy and get them in quickly. So it's a matter of trying to, to measure progress on the job with cost and all of the other impacts associated with opening this fall. Okay. So we did get off to a good start. We will know shortly, and I'll report at facilities where we stand, but even during the COVID interruption, if you will, the gym floor concrete has been placed, exterior window installation is nearly, nearly complete, the administration area where Scott lives has stud and drywall, roofing is completed so that areas are dry, the HVAC units are being set this week, so that's a big push that we have, and site utilities are being connected, so we've made some very good progress even in the past several weeks. Safety, however, has to come first. I'm sure that you all understand that with everything you've seen from in and around your home, your own home, to the workplace, to the grocery store. And I believe that a good protocol has been set up, and it really starts at the gate at Nighting, where we have an independent contractor working to take temperatures and ask the COVID questions about workers who arrive, and we need to find out if folks have had contact with someone who's had COVID. I'm sure you're familiar with the line of questioning. And this process has worked out very well. It's also comforted the contractors and their personnel who are coming to the site, knowing that that gate check is there, and it's been very smooth, and it has not delayed getting into the job site in the morning, so this has been a great protocol right at the front gate in the morning. Okay. There's all the things that you've heard about, from very creative hands-free wash stations that workers have created, to additional placards reminding folks about social distancing, to a great effort that's been done by Rob and his team, which is on the next slide, where they are actually cleaning high-touch areas of the building and the site every day after work is finished. This is a tremendous asset, tremendous comfort to everyone. Not only are things like handrails and door handles and the porta-johns taken care of, but job boxes, wheelbarrows, things that workers touch with great frequency, or just being hit at the end of the day by Rob and his crew. This is really similar to how many of the construction sites have been operating, and it's a tremendous help, so we thank Rob and his guys very much for this. Okay. Just some quick slides. You know, folks may wanna know, boy, how in the world can you do construction and maintain social distancing? And there's just a couple of examples here. There's a little bit of site work that's happening, and you can see workers who are six feet apart, they're wearing masks now, since that has been implemented. You have an individual that's in a machine, and so, you know, they can grade next to the building and get prepared for the next phase of work. We'll go quick, Rob. Roofing can continue with small crews that are really separated on the roof. There's individuals who are really working alone, so that's a great example. The drywall guys are from a subcontractor named Clover, and these individuals have just been. The drywall guys are from a subcontractor named Clover, and these individuals have just been fantastic with their personal protective equipment. But they also tend to hang drywall and do their work individually. So a lot of drywall has been hung during this process by individuals, not teams, and they've made great progress. And the masons are enclosing the building, and generally they're working in one or two-man teams to put up brick. So these are just some good examples of how work can actually continue on a construction site. An aerial was taken this week. You can take your time to take a look at that. But for the most part, we're enclosed and dried in and trying to prepare ourselves for the stretch run of site work and paving, which is underway. Just a couple of examples of what the building looks like about now versus when the interruption occurred. The main new two-story classroom wing is fully enclosed. It has shingles on it. It has glass on it. It's got brick on it. It's completely dried in, ready for HVAC. Inside, the large group instruction rooms were just metal studs on March 20th. This is a picture as of May 1st, where drywall was installed in the large group room and also all the classrooms, and it's been spackled. So as soon as we're completely dry, we're ready for paint in here. As I mentioned, outside, we're setting HVAC units. They were all delivered to the site prior to the interruption. The crane has been on site this week. In between today and tomorrow, our rooftop HVAC equipment should be installed. Here's a picture of what we know as D Wing. This is the renovated, single-story classroom wing on the left. The original on the right is the status of the renovation today. In this area, it's the fastest portion of the construction. The new floors are in, the case works in, the lights are in, the ceiling grid is in. We just need to drop ceilings and start to clean up and install devices. So this will be the first area of the building that's completed. The learning stair in the main lobby was really nothing at March 20th. And just last week, concrete was placed on the stair there. So the main lobby will be starting to come together with finishes here soon. I think that the final slide is a budget status. So I'll just draw your attention to really the bottom line. You'll be familiar with this budget from when it was shown to the board after bid day. We have a project budget of $28,923.22. We started the project with $1,009,000 in contingency. And as of today, there's $1,864,000 left in contingency. And that includes the deduction of the change order for the steel reinforcement that was added to the building. What we've done really here in the past month or two is finalize furniture and also computer technology and equipment that goes in the building. Kudos to Joe Cuso, who brought his equipment in under budget, to Scott, who's worked hard on the playground and the furniture and bought the combination of those two items in under budget. And overall, our soft costs have been very well managed on a monthly basis by the admin team. And so as we stand today, we are in good shape from a budget standpoint. So hopefully this gives the board confidence to make some decisions about what we do and when we open Nighting. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
I'll give you the time hack, Jamie, since no one has a question yet. That was 1:5.
All right, then I'm going to do a show while I have you all here. I see that Jen Corolla is on the call, and you guys stole her away from my district in Amas. And I want to let her know that her prized student Grace Lynch got into James Madison University, which was her first choice, and she'll be attending in the fall. She just found out here in May. So thanks to Jen, and you guys have a superstar on your team now, let me tell you.
I'd like to just briefly kick off the comments while you're thinking about questions you may have for Jamie. I would tell you that we were the guinea pig right after the, for Dewey Engineering and all the schools that they're building out there. And we were the guinea pig to reopen. And with our solicitor for construction, Jamie has been phenomenal and getting us up and running. It was just a matter of days, as you saw on his timeline, where we had a we had a protocol put in place, as you saw, with our industrial hygienist and the protocols for self-identification of the workers out there, and that worked. And it did not go down a beat out on our construction site. So hats off to Dewey, hats off to Jamie. It's nice to have Mike back on site, back with us. And the incredible thing there is you could saw on the bottom line of the contingency there, we still have most of it left, a vast, probably 80%, 85% of it left. And I'm just very grateful for the financial management of the project, too.
Is our hygienist budget coming out of the contingency? Or how was that budget? And I know we voted for it, but...
Zach will answer that question.
We haven't actually received a bill for it, but yeah, we'll have to create a line item as soon as we start getting billed for that. Jamie and I have already started to talk about when's the appropriate time to remove that. We're not there yet, but we think it will be sometime in the near future. But yeah, it'll come out of the contingency somewhere in those soft costs.
There's one line item in the budget that you'll see that is for the hygienist. So the numbers that you see have $25,000 of hygienist already accounted for, Chris.
Comments from anybody? Chris?
I just wanted to say you guys are doing a great job. I know that can't be. You nailed it. I was thinking, how in the heck do you have a construction continuing while having to keep the distance? That has to be in some ways complex. So it's like you guys are moving right along.
Well, we just tell people that they can argue on the construction site and stay apart, and it works out fine. We'll continue to work very hard. The chores ahead really for all of you and for us to understand how things will look in the fall. But we'll work with you in every way that we can. Thank you. You're doing a good job cleaning the outside of the site, too. I drive by a couple of times a week, and I've yet to get a flat tire from a nail or a screw outside of the construction site, so. All right, Mike Spatafor is on the call, too. I'll have him take care of that, Chris.
Thanks a lot, Jamie. I'm going to move on to a superintendent's report. If you're interested in going point by point, it's under the goals. There's a PDF there that's attached. In there, we have the four school data presentations that you were expecting over the last couple of months and throughout the rest of this academic year, from the high school, from Strayer Middle, from the sixth-grade center in Pough. They hadn't been before you. And what I would like to do is set up an opportunity for each one of them to present to the board some evening if you're tired of Netflix. And so you can have the team of presenters, they put together videos for you. It's pretty darn cool. And with their presentation, again, talking about how they use data and their decision-making at their schools. So I look forward to doing that and doing it some evening just as an information session for the board. But their videos are there right now for the community to take in. Every week, Chad Evans and Aaron and Zach Garger, Rachel German and Kelly Kramer, they lead a new teachers' academy. And I would tell you, it is gangbusters. I've said it. I've stopped in three times since we've been working at home. And about 35, 40 teachers are in there. Not all brand-new teachers. There are some of them are long-term subs, some are in their second year, third year of being in the district, and it's just been awesome. I guess I got my number. There's 45 teachers in there participating. It's a great opportunity. And we're still doing PD in a very big way on Fridays for all teachers and all faculty members, and especially on Wednesdays for the new teachers' academy. Just as a reminder, as we put out last time, the national testing requirements, federal testing requirements have been waived, and we realigned the math curriculum. So if you have a rising ninth grader out there, instead of getting geometry next year, you're going to get algebra II. And as of right now, things may change, but we still have to take our exams. New information for you all. But if you read my blog that I sent out Saturday night, we're creating a task force. First, the task force is in case we have to open virtually in the fall. It will involve, the task force members will be teachers, support staff members, administrators, other members of the team. And we'll be building our virtual environment for the fall, if that's what we have to do from the ground up and taking all inputs. Prior to doing that, we're going to survey students, secondary students, and all parents to get their feedback. One of the interesting things that I've received emails from parents so far, I've received a lot of emails, which is really cool. And I guess given the environment, there's a lot of concerns, and they have a little bit more time to share their concerns and their ideas. But one of the things I've got from parents is they're concerned if we are opening up in the schools about the safety of their children. Another other concerns are about wearing protective masks, face masks, in their elementary children. Interestingly, Zach and I met yesterday with the director of lifespan, who has created and which is now recognized as a statewide model during the pandemic. And interestingly, they are only taking in right now essential workers. And therefore, they're really downsized because they've shut down two other facilities, and they're only taking in children at their Quaker Town campus, right across the street from the district office. Obviously, right across the street from us here, but it's not here. But anyway, what they're learning, just as a point of order, is that they have, for their children, they're putting on face masks. That lasted two days. Two days. We've been into this two months. That lasted two days for them. And it's now been picked up as a statewide model in how to do things. They do all the sanitation, sanitary things, sanitizing the facility, all the hand cleaning and all that. But at the younger years, they're not using face masks. So I just thought that I bring that one up. So the task force will start in earnest next week. There's been a lot of planning behind the scenes on it, but we're going to build it from the ground up, working with our different associations, and then all the members of our team. Moving on, People Services has been continuing to doing their hundreds of EIP updates that they have to do. Janet, you're out there. Real quick, I'm going to put you on the spot. If you could unmute.
Sure.
If you would briefly talk about what's been going on out there with your IEPs, your NORPs and all that.
Sure. So our timelines in special ed haven't stopped, even though our last day was March 13th. And neither do the legal cases either. So we've been in mediation. We have virtual due process happening. Not the highlights of this part of my job, but we're still moving forward with that. Our teachers, I'm really proud of them. They're doing a great job in providing social emotional supports to our students who are struggling. And they're continuing to reach out to those students who are a little tough to reach. So we're working hard every day, and I'm proud of everything that my teachers, counselors, nurses, psychologists, and everyone in people services is doing. So thank you.
And Janet knows by the fall, we're going to be making sure we will be able to provide free and appropriate education for all and do the best for all of our students. And as I indicated in my blog, if we are required to be in a virtual environment, either partially or full-time, then we will be requiring attendance and grading, which is, I believe, our system that we've had this spring has been gangbusters. We've had a lot of student participation, not all, but there's been a lot of teaching, great teaching going on and a lot of learning out there. Also, Ms. Edwards, Dr. Hoffman, and Ms. Bologna have all been participating participating in the University of Pennsylvania Mental Health and Optimal Development Consortium. They were in that session today and talking about how to do work with students and our faculties in our current situation in remote environment. I have a guest speaker today, someone who I like to brag about. He is 17, going on 45. I've known Mason Smith, who is a junior at the high school for probably, and I guess Mason, you can tell everybody in a minute, how many years that he came up to me and said hi the first time we met. But it was years ago. He set up a food drive for our local food pantry, and I'd like him to talk about what he was doing. Mason?
Thank you for that warm welcome, Dr. Harner. Hello, everyone. I'm glad to be here. So like Dr. Harner said, well, let me get a quick background before I start. Like Dr. Harner said, I'm a junior at the high school, as well as a junior borough councilman within Quaker Town. So this is all kind of familiar with me. So I'm running a food drive. I got the idea in late April. The initial target date was May 9th. It initially started with the township, Richland Township. I got close with Tim Arnold, the Richland Township supervisor, when I was working on my Eagle Scout project. He was a big influence and a big help in the community. So he was a good connection at first. But then using my connections on Borough Council, I've worked close with Scott McElroy and his team, his marketing team. So it initially started with that township and that borough. But when I got on a community leader Zoom, I talked to a few other locations. So now we have a total of six drop-off locations for this food drive to help the pantry, three boroughs and three townships. And I'm really proud that I've gotten 12 developments to help out. Brighton Gardens, Hunter's Crossing, Regency Manor, just to name a few. But the target date now is May 16th, two days. The borough, as well as the other townships, got out and talked on Swift Reach and posted on their Facebook page. I've been posting on my social media as well to get it out. It's May 16th, 10 to 2. It's a Saturday. The pantry mostly just wants canned goods, canned complete meals, chicken, tuna, spam, ham. So that's basically everything you need to know right now.
Mason, thank you very much for providing that. Talk a little bit about your last two months as a student at the high school. This is totally unrehearsed, so I don't know what you're going to say. So talk about it, and I'm sure you're taking some exams here.
I'm actually taking my AP US History tomorrow. So I still need to cram a few notes, make sure I get the best score I can for tomorrow. So yeah, this is totally unexpected. I didn't really know what to anticipate on the last day. I believe it was the 13th, Friday the 13th, actually. I kind of heard on the news, I said, okay, this will only be maybe two weeks. We'll be back in session. But it's crazy to see the response at the local, the state level, and across the United States. So I'm glad to see the educators here. Everyone's talking, and we're trying to work our way around this. But yeah, the whole online school, I've appreciated that. Getting time to talk with teachers, email them, work around this schedule. I do prefer being in the building, actually, and taking advantage of my education there. But I do enjoy sleeping in a little and then being able to log on and take my classes that way. But I would much rather be back in school right now.
Questions from any board members about his food pantry project or about what's going on in his life at home?
No, I think it's awesome. This is Keith McCouchy. I think it's...
No, I think it's awesome. This is Keith McCucci. I think it's awesome and great job.
Thank you.
Yeah. This is Jennifer Weed and I second that. And also just want to mention, um, if those of you who can't necessarily donate food or don't feel comfortable doing that, my husband and I have been donating money every week to the food pantry and that's a nice way to do it too. They really do have a need.
I know the pantry does have a list on Amazon available there. So if you go to the pantry's website, you can donate through there, things that they requested. Um, I was curious, what did you do for your Eagle Scout project? Very briefly?
So I got my Eagle Scout at the age of 14 and that was, it was, the slogan was 2,000 pounds for Quaker Town. So it was actually a food pantry drive as well, where I collected 2,000 pounds of food. Um, I worked with local supermarkets, um, different locations. I take, I took donations. Um, and then I delivered it to the food pantry I'm actually doing this project for. So I've worked with Sally Lindmuth before, who is a, she is the food drive coordinator. So this is kind of familiar, uh, except on a larger community level.
Great job. Thank you for your service. Well done getting Eagle at 14. That's a, I'd say an admirable goal, but, uh, it's, uh, quite unheard of.
Thank you. Yeah, I try to be ambitious.
Thank you, Mason. Thank you, thank you, Mason. Another, say again, Mason?
Have a good rest of your night. I'm going to leave the meeting. I'm going to go over my notes for tomorrow. If that's okay.
Sounds good. Also, uh, we have a seventh grader out there who has a 3D printer at home. Um, he was, uh, producing face masks for, um, critical personnel. And I, and Gary wrote a story about that and I, I'm sure you've seen that out there on social media. Also not mentioned out there, Chris Polk came in early on, um, with his 3D printer and he's a teacher at our high school. And he created, uh, protective, uh, masks, the, the big shield thing for, for our police officers in, in the Quaker Town borough. And finally, under student, uh, updates, um, received a really, uh, cool note and, and we did some research on it. Um, our 20, one of our alumni, recent alumni, a class of 2016 graduate Rudy Lewinsky. He's a senior industrial systems engineer major, that's a mouthful, with a minor in leadership at Virginia Tech. He was recognized by the university's 2020 Military Awards. He's, uh, in their ROTC program there. Um, so really proud of him, Air Force ROTC. Uh, under academic programs tonight, I have two short presentations, um, both by, uh, the assistant principals at the high school team, but I'm going to hand it off to, uh, Mr. V to let him kick it off.
Thank you, Dr. Harner. Um, yeah, you'll see quite a bit of the high school night between the data report on that, uh, on the superintendent's report as well as these two presentations. This is, uh, actually a very proud moment, uh, for me as a principal. I have been, uh, here for almost, almost a year, I would say. Uh, and it seemed so long ago, but at the beginning of the year, uh, it really was only what about nine months back? Lisa Hoffman has, um, come to me, uh, in my office and put an idea in my head about, uh, the possibility of doing some pathways at the high school. Um, so I know that she'd been working on it, uh, quite a bit in the past, uh, couple of years, uh, working at the IU together with Chad Evans, um, brought the idea to the high school and, um, and it really intrigued me. And at the time, uh, first initial look at it was, you know what, this is really going to motivate students. It's going to be great for their motivation. And, and then, uh, the, the real proud moment came, of course, when, uh, Jennifer Corolla and Jason Magdis approached me and said, you know what, Matt? For the high school, would you mind if we take charge of this? Uh, this is something, uh, we're passionate about, uh, with their background in CCR and career related opportunities. Uh, Jason having a business background and Jennifer being a counselor with career related opportunities for students that can we take charge of this? And what are you going to say as a principal when they're coming, can we take charge of something that I'm, uh, seeing the benefit of? So, so of course, and, and so they've done a real nice job, uh, with their research and investigation, uh, piggybacking off, uh, the work that, that has been, uh, done already in the district. And, and really put together a very nice presentation and, and come to me with, uh, with some of the ideas and find, you know, not just this is motivating for students, um, I find it to be very, uh, meaningful for students to make those connections. And it will make ultimately our students much more marketable as well. And, and so those are the really the three key things that I would like to, uh, the board to take away from this presentation. Um, I'm very proud of this work, uh, and I'm, and I'm confident that you will, uh, you will see why. So Jen and Jason.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. V. Uh, as he mentioned before, we're, we're really excited about this whole new pathways program. Um, I was involved in the business world for seven years in the business private sector before I became an educator and then went into the, the high school setting as a business ed teacher. And I was a teacher for seven years until I got into administration. So, um, really interested in this, uh, as Jen is, and, and we're going to share tonight with you a few slides. We're going to be as brief as possible. But we want to start off and let you know that we're excited to talk about pathways program and how we're developing in a collaborating way with our high school teachers and also our OTL team. Uh, we recently sent out a survey to our staff and 75% of the respondents were very excited about the pathways framework uh, that we're going to share with you shortly. So that survey that we sent out was returned by 83 staff members. And what's really alarming about the 83 staff members, 31 of them are, are very interested in becoming, uh, internal committee in our pathways. And 20 of those individuals, 20 out of the 80, 83 individuals that surveyed, they are looking forward and possibility of becoming coordinators in this position. So we're going to talk about those, those two, uh, half, half year coordinator positions as well as the internal uh, committee that we're forming in, in this program. But again, to go back to pathways, we see as an opportunity to continue to build our culture while making learning more meaningful to our students. It's a way to motivate our students to future explore their interests and skillsets and make them more marketable in the future successes. So the next slide is going to go through our agenda. And, and again, I know Mr. V had asked me when he first came on board, you know, what, what do you think's different? What do we need? And, and he'll remember this conversation, I, I believe very clearly that I said, boy, we, we knock out the Parker AP or tech school. We're doing great. Uh, I just think we got to get to those middle of the road kids. We got to find something for them. We got to make them more marketable. We got to make them making the big bucks right out of, right out of the, uh, of the school. Uh, so this pathways program work with Dr. Hoffman, OTL, I think it's, it's going to definitely, um, take way and do the good things that we wanted to do. So with that being said, you can see our, our program here that's laid out for you. We're going to take the opportunity. We actually had the opportunity, I should say, to visit four schools, uh, in, in the area. We visited, uh, Southern Palisades, Ethelam School District and Conestoga Valley. And, and from those schools, we took away, uh, what they implemented and, and what they have in their pathways program. So each, each school offered different insights in which allowed us to, to look at these components and see how they fit into our school and for our students to make it impactful. Um, so that's what we're doing. That's, that's our goal. Um, the next slide, actually, stay, go back one more time. I'm sorry. Okay. So, yeah, we're going to, we're going to let Jen talk about the, uh, the framework itself. Now I'm going to go into the five pathways and identify them for you. But Jen's going to kind of go through the meat of this, uh, presentation with why we feel path work. I'm sorry, why we feel the pathways framework is going to be so successful and different from the schools that we visited previously this year. Jen?
Great, thank you. Um, if we could go to the next slide. What you'll notice and hopefully what you'll take away from this presentation, um, outside of the excitement that we as a high school admin team have as well as, um, our, our faculty, is that we're really priding ourselves on the comprehensive framework of this, that we already know we have a strong rigorous academic plan of study for students at the high school. So what we're trying to do is we're trying to take that rigorous plan of study and make it a little bit more cohesive in terms of connecting some interest areas to current course offerings. In addition to that, we are looking to really engage students within classroom experiences that are aligned to real world industry skills, certifications, and also the soft skills that are important for employability purposes these days. So in order to do that, we really want to work on creating partnerships and bridging opportunities within the community for our students. Some of these opportunities will look like actual field placements, on the job training for juniors and seniors. But outside of going to sites, we also want to welcome community members and industry professionals into our building to partner with our teachers, because this is a big component. We'd love for industries to collaborate on classroom and community based project learning assignments for students. We want, and we'll talk a little bit later in the presentation about this, but we want our CCR or college and career readiness artifacts that are required by the state. We want them to become integrated into classroom experiences. So in order to meet state requirements, it's moving beyond box checking and making the experiences meaningful for students. We want to be able to educate our teachers more on what professionals and, and industries need from our graduates. And so therefore we're hoping to provide opportunities for, um, teacher in the workplace, where, where our teachers can go and actually visit site jobs and, and learn more from people doing that work every day. We want to put a, we want to stronger, more strongly emphasize, I should say, the alignment of all the incredible work that's going on at the Upper Bucks County Technical School. We want to, we want to take their curriculum and make sure that we're aligning that to the CCR evidence that we're requiring of students, because those students are achieving, um, some really great, great things at the, at the school and, um, and they should get credit for that. We also want to make sure that we have a stronger emphasis on working with students to identify where are their skillsets? What are their interests? And how can we help them find a path for themselves that when they leave the high school, they find less time trying to figure out what their future plan holds and, and they save themselves money. So one of the things that I, I do want to make mention of, and, and Jason indicated this as well, was that this is really an opportunity for all students. One of the things that we continue to pride ourselves on is, is how can we meet the need for every student? Whether that's your highest student, whether that's your, your, um, lower level student, whether that's your middle of the road student. So there's really is something for everybody in this program. And then lastly, our, our vision really entails a culminating senior portfolio presentation. And the purpose of that presentation will really allow us to, to see that students have been able to demonstrate their ability to synthesize their experiences in addition to the academic coursework they've taken in a way that helps them formulate what their future career goals and plans are. So it's really not only having those experiences, but also being able to reflect on them and understand how they shape their path.
Yeah. So I'm going to piggyback off of that with, um, the five pathways that we're proposing currently here. And if, if Joe would click on the education pathway, it'll actually break down, um, what the students will be seeing and doing. So that's the foundation for the education pathway. Now, again, every student will select the pathway, but they can change it throughout their high school career. Those who in fact do complete with fidelity will be recognized at the end of their senior year. So going back to what Jen had just mentioned, let's say we have these students that go to college and want to be a, um, elementary ed teacher. And all of a sudden their, their junior year, they're going out there to do that, that, um, classroom time. And they, they realize that this might, I really am not into this right now. And they already have been in school two years, spent that money. We're going to try to give that opportunities to them right now. So they get to see this through our pathways program. So again, going back, every student is going to sign up for one. It doesn't, it doesn't tie them into that. They can change at any time. But again, it's going to give them a good guideline moving forward.
So what you'll see is, yeah, we can go to the next one. Thank you. So what you'll see here is the requirements for a pathway designation. If you're, if anyone who aren't familiar with the program of studies and what is required of our graduates, you'll notice that it doesn't differ that immensely. Where you'll find the difference here is that we have allocated out of the six and a half credits of electives that students need to earn for graduation, we've allocated 3.5 of those to be part of pathway selected courses and a half credit to be part of the field study. That still leaves students an additional 2.5 credits that they can choose outside of their pathway. Or if they have other designated courses within the pathway that they have an interest in, they can certainly fulfill those additional 2.5 credits within the pathway courses. Um, so students must select the 3.5 in order to complete a, a pathway with fidelity. Um, and you also need to do that half credit field study as well as a senior portfolio presentation at the end of your senior year. If students have met all of those requirements, that would get them the designation of a pathway. Students can certainly still have the opportunity to dabble a little bit here and dab a little bit there while still meeting graduation requirements. They just won't earn that actual designation at the end of the year. We can go to the next slide. So what does this look like for students? What you see up here is, um, sort of a framework or a sample of what it would look like for a student in grades nine through 12. And we're, we're sticking with the pathway education course, although you saw that we have five pathways to choose from. In the ninth and 10th grade year, many of you probably recognize there is not a whole lot of choice for students. Most of those years are spent meeting some of the requirements, but there are some opportunities for electives. So you'll notice at the bottom of those charts that we have indicated an opportunity to at some times attain a half credit to a full credit of pathway electives depending on a student's course of study. There's also the arts requirement. That's a graduation requirement. So whether a student might choose to do that in any grade level, we just for our purposes today, put them in either ninth or 10th grade. But the program that we are proposing and that we've developed gives a lot of opportunity for students to continue to take world language in addition, in addition to the core content. It continues to allow them to take music electives while still being able to complete a pathway with fidelity. So on the previous slide, I had mentioned that students are required to have 3.5 credits in order to complete a pathway. What you'll also notice in the middle of this slide is that we've given them some even options within those 3.5. We've designated a list that we are expecting students to choose at least 2.5 credits from. The third credit, the last credit that they need, they can choose in the bottom box of other courses. Under there, you'll find some additional AP courses. You'll find world language courses that can count towards that other requirement. Uh, some dual enrollment courses that they can choose to enroll in. Or in this particular pathway, because it's education based, if a student is going in towards the secondary level, they may opt to take additional coursework in a specific content area, which would also count towards the 3.5. So if we can move to the next slide, you'll see what 11th and 12th grade may look like for a student if they were in a pathway program. Again, in 11th grade, as you look towards the bottom, you start to see a little more flexibility in terms of selecting more pathway electives. Or I, I just want to highlight this too. They don't have to be pathway electives because remember they still need to satisfy 2.5 where they could choose from any course in the program of studies to do that. And then when we move to 12th grade, that's when we start seeing field study opportunities. Now, we are saying that there is a potential for students as early as 11th grade to get out in field study. Um, but we probably anticipate at least in the beginning that most of our students who opt for field study experiences will, will do so in their senior year. And that could look as, as little as one period for one semester. It could potentially look at, look like two periods for a full year, depending on what the student's interest level is and, and what the placement site is. And, and maybe it's, um, maybe it's multiple placements to give a diverse experience to that student. I think we can go on to the next slide.
So Jen just touched on the field study a little bit. Um, again, you can see some of the highlighted areas. We're going to clearly define it. And this is actually going to take place this summer. We're working on the application. We do look at four hours per week that they're involved with their placement. Um, this is going to be in their transcript. We're looking at a pass fail. And the grade will be, uh, uh, communication with not only the industry leader, but also our pathways coordinator and working together. Uh, we do like the workshops and the, the progress meetings that were going to be held. And we like to have OTL take place with that, uh, as far as setting up things and, and moving these students to the next, to the next level. So again, that's our field study. We want to move on to our next phase. Cause I know we are tight on time right now. I think we're at 12 minutes, so I apologize. But our phase one, you can see we are ready, uh, in the spring, set up for our, our committees, our internal committees. We're looking at identifying two, uh, pathways coordinators in our high school that would work, uh, in, in the morning for two periods and in the afternoon for two periods. Um, that's going on right now that we're trying to develop that. Uh, this summer, we're looking at again, finalizing the senior portfolio and also looking at the guidelines for the field study, the clearances. Um, also looking at connecting those bridges with our outside external committees. And, and we plan on meeting with these external committees once a semester. And then of course, in the fall, tying this all in again with our CCR, um, with our, our organization, with the workplace opportunities. And again, continue to just expand not only, uh, out with our outside agencies, but also our curriculum and inside and making those, those connections from industry to our school. So that's our pathways, I'm sorry, our, our phase one. Jen's going to briefly talk about phase two, and then we're going to try to wrap this up.
Okay. So phase two would take place next spring. And one of the first things that we really need to be intentional about is around course selection time, really leading the rollout to students and parents to help them understand what this all means, what it looks like and, and how it can really assist their students as they go through their four what it looks like and, and how it can really assist their students as they go through their four years of high school. We plan to distribute our first applications for field study in the spring that the students can participate the following school year. And we expect by the spring to see some integration of skill-based experiences and soft skill lessons within some classrooms across the building. So to really, you know, identifying the work that we're trying to do, starting to see it implemented. We know that the IU and Rachel Holler and Chad and Dr. Hoffman, they've been involved in, in the development of this Career Ready Bucks platform, which will really help all schools in the Bucks County area connect themselves with industry partners. And so hopefully, some of the, some more development will, will have happened by the spring of next year. And so we look to find ways that we can take that platform and integrate it into our pathways program. We want to make sure that in the spring of next year, we begin to, you know, evaluate course offerings and see how they align with our Program of Studies and maybe perhaps make recommendations for how we continue with pathway programs and other courses. And probably one of the most important pieces is at the end of next school year, it's, it's important to stop, evaluate what we're doing, survey our staff and, and look for what improvements can we make in the, in the future years.
So fall 2021, our ninth, every ninth and 10th grade student will be selected in a career pathways. And that even could be their undeclared. But every student nine, 10th will be established in a career pathways. There's a lot of highlights here, but the other thing would be that we're, we're looking at making the field study, the guidelines for the field study. All our students will be going out at that point. And we're looking forward to those opportunities to build the connections with our community and our industries. Also again, a couple bullets down that talks about the introduction and implementation of our CCR portfolio revisions for the students. So again, just to recap of what Jen mentioned earlier, making these, not the box checking, making it meaningful learning for the CCR that's actually going in the classroom and it's not just something they do on the side. So again, making those connections, that's most important here. Implementation of certifications of pathways program, we're habitable. That's something we're really going to strive for and we really think is a great benefit to get the students certified in certain areas. And then of course, with approval, we're looking at the senior portfolio for graduate, graduation as a requirement. So hopefully, that goes through for the year of 2024. So that wraps up our phase three and then Jen will talk about the big why.
Okay, so the why. So hopefully by this point, you've gotten, you have an understanding of why we think this is so important for all students. The one thing I mentioned on one of the earlier slides was, was there is a connection and a correlation to accountability to the state. If you're not familiar, the Future Ready Index is really the public facing school progress report for schools. And one of the three indicators on the Future Ready Index is college and the career, career measure. Under this falls the requirement that the students are required to do eight pieces of evidence by the end of their junior year within the four strands of the career education and work standards. Right now, we do have students completing these requirements. They're mostly doing them through NAVIANS. There's a job shadow component of it. But these are the things that we're looking to actually embed and integrate into classroom experiences. NAVIANS can certainly still provide opportunities for interest exploration and career exploration. But some of the work we think can be done hand in hand with what's going on within curriculum. Also, one of those requirements is the implementation of an individualized career plan for students. That is required by the state and that is a key component of what we want our students to be able to develop as a result of this. So there goes the real meaningful aspect of this. It's really moving from compliance into engagement. And you know, hopefully it's helping more organically meet these requirements. The obvious other benefits are stronger community partnerships with all stakeholders. So it's a mutually beneficial relationship for our teachers and our students as well as the community. You know, the ultimate goal is if, if we can provide a pipeline of employees out to our community, that benefits everybody. And that doesn't mean just directly from high school into the community, but it could be a student going off to a four-year college and then maybe returning to the area after they complete their degree to continue working in an experience they had at the high school. And, and we anticipate that all this meaningful work that's happening within our classrooms, that is going to increase greater student motivation. And essentially, at the end of all this, you heard earlier, you know, rigor relevance relationships and now readiness. And those marketable skills will make our students ready to take the next step out into the world, whether they choose again, four-year college, two-year college, trade or technical schools, military, or to go right into the career force as they leave our high school. So you heard a lot today. It's quite comprehensive. There's a lot of work to be done. But what continues to motivate and, and fuel us is the fact that there is so much excitement around it from our faculty, that people are really buying in. And I think we can go full steam ahead with creating something incredible for our students and a unique opportunity different from maybe some other schools in the area and what they're offering.
Any questions?
As you can see, it's quite, it's quite exciting. And you can see they're very proud of the work that they've done. And, and given the restraints of this new setting here, we do want to move forward in a phased, in a phased manner. And I think that's, it's a well done. They certainly did their homework. It's very, very comprehensive. So at this time, just want to open the floor to some questions for just a few minutes. I don't want to take too many, too much of the time. But if there are a few questions, I'm sure Jen and Jay and I will be happy to answer them for you.
I have a quick question. There are a couple of quick questions, but I'll try and be real quick. The, for a student that would be entering their senior year in the 21 year, school year, how would that, would you be starting people in these pathways that late? Or is this for more ninth and 10th graders coming in?
So initially, the, the, the full implementation of the program will take place with the rising 10th graders. And, and we do that because we really want to do this with fidelity. We don't want to just throw an idea at students that's not, that's not completely in place. However, we will have an opportunity for students to be out on field studies even in the upper grades. And so having a coordinator in place that manages some of those field study placements or those internship placements will certainly be beneficial to all students nine through 12. So students who would like to benefit from that in 11th and 12th grade certainly can. But the full pathways program, we're looking to implement with the rising 10th graders.
Okay. And the, the second question I did have is, I did click on, I have another monitor here set up. I, I clicked on the Arts and Humanities Career Pathway. And inside of that, under the Music section, it shows that your combo band and choir only puts the middle band along with the upper choir. I, I didn't know. I, I mean, I, I do know that a lot of the upper band students are also in the upper choir. And would that hurt either one of those programs if it remains this way? Or is there still some flexibility in that?
It, it really shouldn't. And, and so the students who are, are eligible for the honors courses should certainly be able to take the honors in both. This, I'll, I'll let Jen and Jason speak to the specifics of it. But just know that this, if for this more specific information, we're going to get the teachers on board in a committee. And so further conversations going to be had about the exact implementation of the program. We would like this to be a collaborative effort between the building, the district level personnel, OTL, Lisa Hoffman, Chad Evans, as well as our teachers, because we want everybody to be on board. And so we're looking to form that committee soon, this, this year, at the end of this year and into the summer, so that we can start having conversations about specifics of the implementation. But by no means should it hurt students in the process.
Right. And then Jen, Jen caught that actually because I was all about pathways. Let's make sure these are the classes. Let's really, and then Jen's like, well, what about this, that? And she definitely picked up and she'll talk about that maybe a little bit with the band choir and, and recognized it right away. So we had to come back and that's why I went from I believe a three and a half to the two and a half. Jen, if you want to speak to that.
Yeah, I, I just want to make sure that we, we do highlight, we did have some intentionality behind the students who are very interested in music to allow them to be able to complete a pathway. And so if your question is if there's a course missing on there, we certainly will take a look at that. And, and that's sort of, we're still in the spring phase one for revisions of all of this. We've had our teachers fine tooth combing it to make sure they can offer any suggestions. Or if there's been any oversight of a course that we need to add to a pathway that we're still doing that. So that's definitely something, Mr. Spear, that I'll take a look at or we'll take a look at and make sure if it's in the Program of Studies and it's not listed there and it makes sense, we can add that, no problem.
Yeah, the teachers are, you know, well versed in what kids are in which programs now and where, if they were to move into a pathway where they would be best placed, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you. You answered my questions.
It's, it's Keith McCucci. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so I, I think, I think pathways are, it's, it's an interesting concept, I guess, in education. I don't, I know we use it in medicine all the time. And it's been shown to have better outcomes with a more consistent pathway application. And I was wondering, I mean, is there any data like that as far as you know that exists?
Yeah, I was actually at a conference in, I believe it wasn't Hershey, two years ago where, three years ago, where Sauterton School District had presented some of the outcomes and, and the successes that they've had in their district by using this model. I don't have the exact data in front of me now, but I'm happy to share that with you and with the public, really. We have seen also, and Jen and Jason can speak better too, that, that, that the schools where it's been implemented right now, it's been very successful. And one of the schools actually has been doing it for decades. And they are not looking to step away from it because it is so successful. And making those connections with industry, truly making education like a community effort in, in a sense. And making sure that students find those connections has been very beneficial to their students in motivating them to stick with, stick with the education that they're, that they're being provided. So I am happy to share that with you. I don't have it in front of me right now. But I know that Sauterton is one of the primary school districts that presents often at these conferences for, for educators because of the success that they've seen in that district.
Keith, that's a really good question. It was something I was actually going to do my dissertation on. But the data piece is hard to follow because of the students being outside of the school. They're graduating. They're going on to their careers. But one thing that I said when Jen and I were going around and looking at these other schools and what they're doing, we're like, I just don't want to gift wrap it. I just don't want to put a couple of classes and then say that's a pathway. So we're really inclined to make the connection where engineers come into the classroom and business leaders come into the classroom. And guess what? The curriculum that we taught, it's great, but maybe there's some new, there are new things out there that we should be doing differently or better. And that's what we want to do. We want to just keep raising that bar, not only for our students, for our teachers as well, and just, and make that difference. Because a lot of the places we went, we're, we're kind of just putting a bow on a couple of different classes and calling it something. And we're going to do a little bit different than that. At least that's what we hope. And that's what the teachers were really rallying around and had some good buy-in. So we're looking forward to it.
And I think the timing is perfect. The state has come out with these guidelines for, for career, college and career readiness for students. And we are under that mandate from the state to have these implementations. And you know, a lot of districts that I'm seeing, they're, they're doing their best in checking the box and meeting the state requirement. But what an opportunity we have here, not only to meet those requirements, but to make those requirements meaningful for students. And I think that's the intent that, that those requirements have to begin with. And I think we have a great opportunity to make that happen. And I think the timing is just right at this point.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. And it would be just interesting to see, you know, comparing, comparing and contrasting the two different professions, but nonetheless, you're working with people. And my other question is, is really around, you know, the flexibility of, you know, knowing that it's not one size fits all and the application to students being something that you may, may vary, you know, depending on, on that particular individual. And so, you know, sometimes with pathways, we get so stuck in, in this is the, the, the way that we follow it. And I don't, I don't know if you guys have thought about that, that flexibility.
I agree 100%. And frankly, the students, the kids are young. And to lock them into a career path at that age, to be quite frank, a lot of our college graduates graduates, graduate with, with an undecided minor because they just don't know, or a major rather, they don't know what they want to do even when they're at the end of their college career. And so that was one of the things that we've discussed is to make sure that students do have the opportunity to switch from pathway to pathway at the end of every school.
And might I add, we also do have an undeclared pathway. So students don't have to choose one of the four clearly defined pathways. If they really are at a point where they just want to dabble a little bit in everything, they can certainly still choose the undeclared pathway. We also see that pathway aligning with our students at Upper Bucks Technical School as well because they are, they are on their own pathway and they can still be part of a pathways program do it following their curriculum that they're getting at Upper Bucks Technical.
I don't have any questions, but.
Congratulations. I think it's great.
Thanks.
I just wanted to say how excited I am about this, to see it evolve into this. And I'm proud of you guys. Good work. And I'm looking forward to seeing it roll out over the next few years. I'm really excited for it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I, I'll introduce the next topic. It's, it's about summer school. And summer school is already here. What was being surrounded with awesome people at the cabinet level with Lisa Hoffman, Janet, Zach, Joe and Nancy Anne. When we first were in, in our stay-at-home posture back in March, we started talking already about how can we get summer school done before the summer? How can we get more high school students to graduate with their classmates if, if we had the, the stay-at-home order lifted and all that? Well, we know that how that's, that played out. But we started planning for seniors in summer school back in the latter part of March, as soon as we got back into the, into a, our continuity of education plan. Right away, the high school team in March, last two weeks of March, they, they called 107 families of our seniors being very concerned about how they're, how they're doing in their courses and making sure that they have an intent to finish up strong with the third quarter. As we have worked through all that, we, teachers closed out their, their reports for the third marking period in report cards. We handed it off the project for summer school off to Jamie Madden. So Matt, would you want to say something before you get into that? Jamie speaks.
Yeah, I think, I think this is one of those silver linings of the shutdown that we had an opportunity to give students to, to get over that finish line before graduation instead of waiting until the summer to do so. Quite a bit of work happening behind the scenes there. Jamie and Chad Evans actually have worked together on putting the students into summer school classes. The first obviously priority being our, our seniors and trying to get them over the finish line. But then also our ninth through 11th graders, giving them an opportunity. And speaking with Lisa Hoffman at district office was able to secure for us that the summer school programs would be free of charge for students. She worked together at the state level to make that happen, which she told me that she had already received some thank you notes from parents that they were very thankful to be able to participate in these opportunities of remediation. Because if it was a paid service, they may not have had access to it. And so across the board, Jamie and Chad were able to enroll over 100 students in over 400 classes. That's not to say that those students are necessarily off track for an on-time graduation. Because as you know, we require less credits for graduation than we give to students an opportunity to do in four years. And so there is some wiggle room. A student might fail one class, which doesn't necessarily put them off track for graduation. But this opportunity of free remediation certainly would put them back on the right track and give them additional opportunities to be successful in the future. And so, so Jamie and Chad behind the scenes have worked very hard to get those students in. We see that a raw number, we have a higher, higher number of students actually participating in that remediation and completing that. Percentage wise, we dropped a little from previous years, but with more than tripling the total number of students who are enrolled in summer school, plus the fact that it's free for them and not all of them need it for graduation. That's not a very big surprise that we see that drop. But the total number, we certainly see an increase of a number of students. We're taking advantage of that in, in part because they have won the time and they have the, the resources to do that. And so I'm very thankful for all the hard work that's happening there. So with further ado, I'm going to give it over to Jamie to give you some of the specific work that has been happening.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jamie Madden, House Principal over at the Academy. I'm going to talk briefly about summer school opportunities we've had in this unique year that we've had. Joe, can you pull up the PowerPoint? All right. So this year, we really were presented with a unique situation, not only All right. So this year, we really were presented with a unique situation, not only um, our year ending early, but um, trying to get all our kids enrolled in these recovery courses so that they can walk with our graduating class. Um, an average school year, you know, kids would complete the school year in June. We would identify those kids that need recovery courses. We would, they would pay for the course and we would enroll them for the summer. Um, and that would be that. Well, this year, you know, our our year ended in March. Um, we had to get our our grades in. Um, and then we had to identify students that needed that recovery. And what we did was we identified thirty-two seniors. Um, and we enrolled them in an early start to summer school back in April, which is going to give them the opportunity to finish and be able to walk with our class, with their class. Um, and then not only the seniors, our grade seven through eleven, any kids that failed a course, we automatically enrolled them into a program called Edgenuity, which was also free of charge. Um, Edgenuity was the program that the state left out um, free of charge for school districts. And our our OTL team um, thought it would be a great opportunity to allow our students um, a free of charge way to recover their courses without having to pay for summer school. Um, so this year, we enrolled double the amount of students compared to last year. Um, the average amount of students that we usually enroll in summer school is about eighty. Um, and out of those eighty, we usually have about seventy-three percent success rate with our students from recovery courses. This year, we enrolled a hundred and twenty-three underclassmen and thirty-two seniors. Um, this is just the status of where our summer school kids are at. Um, this is our seniors. So you can see I have like a two-week window of the data back from May first and then May twelfth. And as of now, um, on May twelve, our students, we had thirty-two students enrolled. Um, and sixty-eight percent of them are active at this point. Um, thirty-two percent are not active or not actively working in their courses right now, and that equates to about nine students. Um, but there's a lot of hard work going in from counselors and administrators for those nine students to get on track. And we're hoping that we'll see them pick up the pace in the, in the next few weeks. This shows the status of our kids in grades nine through eleven, our underclassmen. Chad Evans and I actually created eighty-five courses um for students to take advantage of. We enrolled a hundred and twenty-three students in over four hundred courses. Um, and this is the amount of students that are taking advantage of that um opportunity right now. So you can see from May fifth to May twelfth, right now, we have about an active um percentage rate of forty-eight percent of our students um actively working through those courses. Um, I do expect that number to grow. This is only our second week in summer school per se. Um, so I do see that number growing a lot. We've had a lot of positive communication with parents this week about students that are going to start working and that are getting in the um hang of, in the, you know, the swing of things to get moving with their work. So I do expect that to grow quite a bit. And I just threw this in here at the academy. Um, we have a a much smaller number. Um, our seniors in recovery courses right now, we have about seven students in recovery. Um, and eighty-six percent of them are active, and I expect that all of eighty-six of that percentage um to finish their coursework. Um, I just threw in there that we had seventeen seniors come through our academy this year. And about at least fifteen of them will graduate this year and walk with their class. So that's a great number. Um, and then our underclass, oop, our underclassmen in recovery classes were pretty on track with all of our um underclassmen. We have about a sixty percent activity rate right now, which is pretty good. And then this is just some communication that's happening. There's constant communication between administration, school counselors, students and families to really get students to take the opportunity and um utilize these courses that we put them in. So we hope to see a bigger um number jump next week. Um, and I'm I'm pretty positive that'll happen.
I think I would be remiss to say that I'm uh, not, not to say that I'm incredibly proud of this team. Uh, incredibly proud of the work that the house principals have put together. The one presentation we were not able to share today uh about the data of the high school, Adam Dini or other house principals instrumental in the development of that. And so all the work that has been happening uh behind the scenes on pathway, summer school, uh, the data presentation, we're revamping graduation ceremonies, we're redoing all of instruction. We're uh looking for support teachers in a a remote environment. Um, and and all that uh at the same time, I am very proud of this team and I and I hope that showed a little bit tonight here at this meeting.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Jamie. Thank you, Jason and Jen. Um, Lisa, just a little bit of the funding piece. Sounds like a lot of stuff going on. A lot of really great things for for our students who are at risk and maybe still at risk, but offering a lot of opportunity and follow-up and counselor connections, administrator connections, parent connections and all that. But I'd like you to talk, Lisa, briefly, just close this conversation out about how we paying for it.
Sure. Happy evening, everyone. So I think that the most important thing to note is that even before um, the shutdown happened, we had some conversations at the board level and in the ed committee. Um, Ms. Mitchell was um part of those conversations as well about looking at whether or not the way that we offered summer school uh was beneficial for our students and the cost. So we had already been looking into some lower cost options for summer school, which kind of gave us a little bit of a a springboard when when it came to this time. But the real, um, the real help for us was when the state offered the product of Edgenuity free to all schools. The intention was for districts to use that for their core instruction during the shutdown. But um, our team felt as though Quaker Town was positioned well to use our actual um materials and our teachers and our classrooms in Canvas and Seesaw, and that we didn't need to supplement uh with this product. So we were able to use it in a little bit of a different way and bring um, bring all of these classes to our students for free. Um, I think that one of the big things in Jamie's presentation to note is that we did enroll double the students. Um, that's not because twice as many students failed this year. It's because typically we have at least half of the students who indicate to us that they um, they can't do summer school for one reason or another. Um, and oftentimes that is because of pay. We have tried to offset the costs in the past, but um, but certainly this this helps. So I just want to make sure that uh we clarify that for anybody who may think that for some reason we have double the amount of students. That's, that's not actually the case. But so thankful for all of those opportunities and um for Chad and Jamie for getting this ready for our students. And um, and hopeful that they will take advantage of that. And um, as Mr. V said, I'm very glad for all those families who have already reached out to us, thanking us for offering their their child this opportunity um for free, especially especially in these times. I think that's been um really great.
Questions and comments?
I have a comment uh this time. Um, the uh, I think we should learn from this that we are getting much better enrollment because, once we eliminated the costs with it. And moving forward, this should be something we really consider or work hard to preserve. You know, I I don't know if the state's just covering it because of this COVID environment that we're in or if it's something we can do moving forward too.
Yeah, it's just because of this environment that we're in, but it's definitely allowing us to look at, you know, how we may be able to offer things similar to this in the future. Um, at at least a lower cost, if not, if not free in the future.
Any other comments? I have two final points, superintendent's report, then we can move on. Um, one is the, on May twenty-first, we'll have our first meeting for the comprehensive planning uh team. Uh, Ms. Edwards is going to be anchoring that as she has for the last fifteen, eighteen years. Every time this has come up, every three years, it will be in a Zoom um scenario, kind of like this. And and we look forward to the committee's participation. The last thing that I wanted to talk about was about high school graduation and safety. Uh, we have, as I talked about on my blog that that was released on, that I sent out on, I wrote and it's sent out on Saturday. And 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 uh, Mr. V sent out, notified his senior families on the previous Monday. We have three parts to graduation. We have the one part where the 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 uh high school team and the the class sponsors will be dropping off um caps and gowns and road signs and our our yard signs, not road signs, yard signs at our, at the home of our graduates. Not making contact with the graduate, keeping more, more than enough social distance from them. Um, the second part is a a road um car parade going through town. Um, that will be uh, on June sixteenth, and we'll let board members know about it. If they would want to stand on the curb, social distancing will um, obviously taking that into into a a account. And um, that will be in the evening of June sixteenth. And we'll have a screen outside when the, when the, the car goes by the the high school. It'll be a screen and music with the picture of the student who's driving by and in the car with his family or her family um up on the screen. The last part is a probably the most complex thing that that I've been a part of in the, in the high school is and trying to piece together and keep everybody safe and and all that. And that is creating a hy- hybrid model um of graduation. And um, we will have all the safety things that are required for us and social distancing. And that's going to be filming each one of the, every student and with three family members in in attendance. Um, them walking across the stage and that'll be filmed. Um, we'll have our class supervisors giving their speeches, one person in the auditorium at a time. Um, with the camera crew filming. Um, our board president, she's working on her speech, her first of probably many um out there. And we may talk about sea turtles and learn a little bit more. Um, and then the uh, the class officers will have an opportunity, yes, Ms. Mitchell, yes, we're, we're counting on you, young ma'am. I just, anyway, um, the class officers will give their speeches. And then my small part that I do every year at the PPNL Center Stabler along with the principal, anointing the class and announcing their graduation. But that's all going to be uh with one person in in the auditorium at a time. And we'll be filming that. We'll be asking for family support. And we'll um, we'll, we bringing them in the the side door and X-ing them out by the band door. Now, the one thing, point of concern, um, today I was on a superintendent's meeting with all the Bucks County superintendents. And we went over um, not having guidance from the state until yesterday about graduation ceremonies. So we were planning it on our own and most of the districts were doing something similar to ours. There's some, some that were doing it almost identical, some out there on their football field, some uh in in their auditorium. Like we're, we're doing it to Q-PAC. Um, and uh, and several are having the parades with their cars. But today, we were talking about our concerns about the new guidance that came out. And um, let me see if I can br- bring it up on my email. Uh, this was published on the Department of Public, uh, Pennsylvania Department of Education's website. It says, "Schools located in counties or regions that are in the red phase may only hold virtual events for graduation and other traditional end-of-school-year ceremonies. Large gatherings are prohibited and travel should be limited to life-sustaining purposes." Even further, since we've been in this meeting, the Centers for Disease Control kicked out its gr- its guidance for schools. That came out around six o'clock tonight, seven o'clock tonight. And I'm, and I, as I'm looking at my iPad with all the messages, all the superintendents, my colleagues in the county are starting to respond to it. So I don't know what's going to happen. Um, and every day, as you know, we don't know what's going to happen. Um, but right now, we are planning for right after Memorial Day weekend to start our production of high school graduation in a hybrid uh live approach. Uh, and but I will, we'll tell you, we will follow the state guidelines and uh, and their expectations, and we will keep everyone safe. So, uh, does anyone have any questions on that, other than on Ms. Mitchell's speech?
Like, graduation is life-sustaining, isn't it? Um, you know, one thing that I think is a a small um glimmer of hope maybe is that I think um, most of you probably know this, but some of the public may not, is that the Bucks County Commissioners did appeal to the governor. And the governor is taking a second look at our status as far as being red and moving us into yellow. So graduation is still some time off and and you know, maybe um, maybe that'll change between now and then. I sure hope so. Because our, our graduates deserve this celebration.
Plus, we're not violating any of the, you know, it's not going to be a big gathering. It's like a few people. So you're not violating any of those. They're, they're not even laws, anyway. There's, there's no legal requirement. They're just guidelines. So.
Well, if, um, the coordination for the first two parts from Mr. V and his team and coordinating with through Bob, Bob Lee, Officer Bob Lee with the borough and uh for having the first two activities, the delivering of the yard signs and the, and the uh caps and gowns and the parade, that's already been signed off with by our safety uh and law enforcement officials in town. Um, so we're, we had, we did all that work. But I want to make sure that you are aware and the community is aware for anyone who is listening tonight um to feel um, be advised that it it's still evolving.
Yep.
We will make it, we will make something work.
Yep.
Something, but.
Looks nothing like going to the grocery store where you got planned, so full steam ahead.
Where the people wearing masks down here.
Or just, just the fact that there's zillions of people in the freaking stores. So.
Right.
You know, you're talking small numbers of family at a time. So you, you're not violating the spirit of the, you know, you're not having a big gathering. People driving down the streets, not a big gathering.
I'm with you.
I, I did hear if you're on Zoom too long, you can get COVID, so.
That's a hint. Then we're moving on. That completes my superintendent report.
Just throwing it out there.
That's too funny. Um, all right, moving on, moving on. So we're going to go to our standing committee reports. And Mr. McCucci, you're up with your finance committee uh report.
Yeah, so we had a meeting on Thursday, April twenty-third. Um, and uh, I'm just going to give the abbreviated form. So we talked about the twenty-twenty uh one revenue scenario. Uh, and as we spoke about at uh multiple meetings in the past, uh, we're projecting a five-point-five million dollar deficit. About two-point-seven million of that is operational deficit and two-point-eight million is lost revenue. Um, there was a recommendation from the administration not to cut the budget. Um, but instead, uh, developed strategies to reduce spending throughout the year. We do have a healthy fund balance, which is a a good thing. Um, and the administration believes that it can weather this storm in the short term while developing uh long-range plans. Some of the strategies to control the spending were uh to reduce supplies and materials. Uh, hold on filling vacant positions right now um and reworking the five-year capital uh projections. Um, so more to come on that, uh, but I do want to give the finance team a shout out. They've done a a very good job of trying to project this, uh, looking at uh models from from the two thousand and eight uh financial crisis. So, um, there was other, uh, there was a presentation that looked at the P M F, uh, PFM modeling. Um, and uh, and it looked like we could be facing about an eight-million-dollar deficit um, uh, in the future, a secondary loss revenue, uh, secondary to the COVID uh crisis that we're facing now. Um, and just something to keep in in mind as we move forward. Uh, that we may have some, as a board, may have some difficult decisions coming up in the future. Uh, we reviewed the implications of the pandemic for the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty expenditures and revenues. Uh, as you know, uh, COVID has taken a pretty nasty hit to the economy. Um, Mrs. Ralston's uh prepared a bud, a projected savings from being shut down uh the last three months. Um, but those savings are really going to be minimal. Uh, the data suggests that the impact uh will be in a negative way. Any savings will be minimal. Um, and and the general fund uh will cover the projected losses. Um, specifically in the food service fund. Uh, you know, one of the things that has been brought up by the public is they expected that, that they thought that there, there would be um, some type of tax break. Um, but uh, we want everybody to know, both in the finance and this board, um, that school has been going on, distance learning has been taking place. Um, and it, and I I can't give a shout out enough to the um, the administration uh, and uh, and the building administration, as well as our teachers, who have done a great job uh reaching out to the students. Uh, one last part is the Act thirteen, um, really, which is state legislate, uh, legislate or controlled. Um, uh, encourages districts to continue to pay their contractors, like transportation um, to avoid any potential losses and subsidies and stimulus in the future. Uh, moving along, we did, they presented the third look uh at the benefits and uh district uh insurance premiums. Um, it looks like uh, we are going. It looks like we are going to see an increase of about 7.9% in both medical and prescription, and and that's more to come. That should be up, it could be as high as about 9.9%. I believe we're going to be discussing that later on and on the budget. Moving on to the food, the Food Service Fund is projected to see a loss of about 230K. This includes a projected subsidy from serving free meals during the shutdown, which we are continuing, as well as the loss of revenue from not having students in the building and our payment for administrative oversight to chart wells while the district is not generating any revenue. So proposed tonight will be a transfer of funds from the general fund to the Food Service Fund to cover these losses. There were two really policy-related discussion items we had in the finance, one is related to meal debt, and the other is to pay to play. And one suggestion we had was that this year we suspend the meal debt policy. This is projected to cost us roughly about 15K, and we'll have a motion tonight to further talk about that. The pay to play, the finance committee had discussions, we we look at about, there's somewhere in about 80K worth of revenue for pay to play. We had a discussion around this being tough times for the entire community, and, you know, the recommendation pushed forward was to suspend the pay to play for the 2021 season. We discussed the tech le- tech leases, some technology leases. We had a presentation by Joe Cuzzo, and this year the district is scheduled to lease approximately $1 million worth of equipment to be paid over four years. So it's interesting, we lease, we buy it for $1 million, we get it back, we get a $1 million refund, and then we lease the equipment at the tune of $250,000. This has already been baked into the budget, so we'll have a motion to further discuss that tonight. And then the capital projects and impact on the budgets, we reviewed, reworked, I should say, the administration has reworked the capital projection plans, to convert it to a six-year plan from a five-year plan, again, looking to save on immediate costs. This will result in budget savings for the next two years to offset the projected financial strains that we're going to come into here in the future, or I should say here and now. We'll also look at any leftover bond money from the Nightig Elementary School project and see if we can, they can only be applied to capital projects, and see what we can, if there's money left over from the bonds, and we'll use those for the capital. And that's all I have. Zach, did I miss anything?
Nope, I think you covered everything.
Very comprehensive. Thank you very much for the detail.
No problem.
All right, we're going to move on to the next committee report, and Mr. Akmanowicz, that's you, you're up about the tech school.
The last JOC meeting was April 16th. We had a follow-up finance call as a whole on May 7th. Discussions of the JOC Principal Charter Document, called the Articles of Incorporations, were conducted on the 5-7 call. There will be a committee to review those in the not-so-distant future. Chris here will be on that particular subcommittee. Megan Badges Cannon from Penridge, and in Palisades, Jim Halliwell. They're going to meet and provide suggestions for any changes to their said boards. The director reported in brief, Amber Ott, the cafeteria manager. She won the cafeteria manager of the year award in Pennsylvania. The Skills USA state competition was canceled. They started the summer deep cleaning. Advertising for the Ag Tech Building was conducted, and it was actually going to be done next week. We'll be taking bids. The staff will be moving to the four-day work week, which I may have mentioned in previous rendition of my report. we discussed proposed new funding methodology, Dr. O'Connell joined us on that follow-up meeting on the 7th, prevented a two different calculations, an average daily membership calculation versus a STEB calculation, which is the calculation we use now. We're going to be discussing that in the future. Conversations about the fund balance were had, and where we're going to pay, how we were going to pay for the addition, that has been resolved, I think, in a motion that we may be passing later. Constituents from Palisades feel that Quaker Town may be able to knock down some of our food services charges at the tech school, and that also is going to come up. We don't currently feed kids, students at the tech school, and we are actually funding the cafeteria there, and so we're probably going to work on that when we change the Articles of Incorporation. Chris, it's on you. Next call for the JOC is May 21st, 2020. You can see the Upper Bucks County Technical School website for details. That concludes my report, Ms. President.
Whoops, I was muted. Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is a president's report. I don't have a report. I would just like to use my time to say thank you so much to all of our teachers and staff, and also special shout out to parents right now. And as a parent of a kindergartner who likes to flop around like a fish sometimes, when I'm the homeschool school mom, I don't think he really likes me as homeschool mom. He misses his teachers. But it's been, it's also the silver lining has been, it's been a joy to see all that my kids are learning and just being, you know, involved in that process. So so stay patient, parents. I know it's hard out there, and thank you so much to all of our teachers. All right, moving on to the items for board action. First, I need a motion to appoint Lynn Ralston as our board treasurer.
So moved.
I'll second.
Anita, if you need names.
That was John.
Just let me know. Yeah, you guys say your name after, if you don't mind, just make it easy for Anita.
Chris, seconded.
All right.
John firsted.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Hey, Mitch, look at you. You got this, you got this figured out. All right, next item is the appointment of the PSBA voting delegate for 2020 to 2021, and I don't know that, do do we need to have a motion on this, or is this?
Just a reminder for you what that entails.
I'm going to have Ron Jackson be nominated.
Yeah. Typically, we would gather together in October out in Hershey to represent our school district when the PSBA met as a group to decide what policies they wanted to push the legislature to enact next year. So if we've got anything as a district that we feel the legislature needs to put a big effort into changing the school code or anything that affects our schools, this is where representatives from our district meet with all the other 500 districts in the state and banter about with PSBA and say, this is important to us, push for this. If you see on the the listing there, three of us can go. Traditionally, I have always gone simply because I'm the PSBA rep, and typically, no one else wants to do it. If you recall, two years ago, I went representing the IU, and Mitch actually went representing our district. So I'm not even sure what this will look like, you know, will it, will it, will it be live in Hershey in October?
I found out that they're going to be planning on doing that online, Mr. Jackson.
Okay, so it's virtual.
Yes.
So there was a chance to go out there and visit, you know, like a local establishment.
Sure.
Volunteered.
So if if anybody wants to volunteer, again, we could have three of us who are quote-unquote delegates. So, you know, I certainly would volunteer to be one of the ones selected. Since no one is traveling, anybody else is welcome to further hat in the ring as well.
Nominate John Kern.
Yeah, if I can make it, whatever it turns out to be, I'll, yeah, I'll tag along.
I would also do it if it was voluntary.
I'll nominate Dave Akmanowicz.
I meant virtual, not voluntary, virtual. Traveling would be a problem for me.
Yes, if that's, there's.
Anita, no trouble. So.
All right, so it'll be Mr. Jackson, Mr. Kern, and Mr. Akmanowicz as PSBA delegates?
I was joking about the John thing unless he really wanted to do it.
No, that's fine. It was a good joke, but that's fine.
But is, do we, do we, Anita, do we need an official nomination and vote?
No, not according to PSBA. You just need to appoint, it's called an appointment, but it didn't say you had to have majority vote or anything.
Madam President, why don't you officially appoint the three of us?
Okay, I will officially appoint John Kern, Dave Akmanowicz, and Ron Jackson as the PSBA voting delegates for 2020 to 2021.
Thank you.
All right. Since we do have an important vote coming up, I just want to check in, do we have any public comments so far? Anything that came in about the fiscal consent agenda, the fiscal agenda?
Not that I have heard. Is Terry, are you on the call? I don't hear her. I have not received any messages from Terry saying she's received any commentary.
Yeah, I'm here. No, I've not received any emails at this time for public comment.
Okay, all right, we're going to move on to, I'm going to start with the roll call votes to approve the proposed final budget, and this is for fiscal year 2020 to 2021. That totals 119 million and some change. That amount includes 2.97 in capital expenditures. Proposed mileage rate is 1.6, or excuse me, 168.83, and that's an increase of 0%, which is something that I don't believe has happened in the history of Quaker Town, and at least.
I think it's about 45 years.
Yeah, something like that.
Since since the school district has incorporated as the Quaker Town Community School District, this would be the first year ever, and there wasn't a tax increase.
Yeah, this is, this is a big deal.
It doesn't really go back that far, Ron.
Yes, I remember Bob Regal presented us one that went back to at least the early 70s, given that this was incorporated, I think, '66, '67. It's possible, some of the earlier ones, but I just like saying this will be the first one ever.
Okay. I don't want to blame this completely on the COVID predicament either, because we were at least in discussions to do this beforehand.
Let's hold off on discussion until we get a motion, right?
All right, let me get a motion, let me get a motion.
Comment before you motion. Do we, and this goes to Jeff, do we have to vote to approve the suspension of the tech school Articles of Agreement before this, because that, isn't that part of this budget?
Part of your budget is, does incorporate the tech school budget, but not suspending the agreement, that would be a separate item.
Suspending that agreement is what moved that money into their fund balance and out of our budget, correct?
I believe so, but you, but your budget reflects the budgetary expenditures for the tech school, does it not?
I can answer that if you want. Chris, it doesn't have to, the tech school doesn't have to be voted on before this. So if you vote on the tech school later, what what Lynn would do before the final budget in June is then just remove that 250,000 and change expenditure line for that Ag building from our our budget, because we would go down, and expenditure's not up. So so we're okay.
Okay.
All right, good deal. So can I get a motion for a vote on the proposed final budget?
So moved.
This is Brian.
John Kern.
Discussion.
Chris, you want to say what you were going to say about that this isn't affecting by COVID?
No, I said, at least we were in discussion before COVID to do this zero tax increase, you know, before this happened. Then after this happened, even though it's harder to swallow, to absorb more costs, we're still moving forward with the zero tax increase.
That's a very good point, and we really have been aiming, and, you know, a lot of kudos needs to go to the administration for setting us up for success to, you know, be able to be in a place where we feel comfortable doing this. And COVID really just solidified this, in my opinion, because we have a pretty high rate here in Upper Bucks County of people that have had to file for unemployment, much like the rest.
And during Keith's Finance Committee Report, he did mention that we have a healthy fund balance. I think that kudos need to go to this board for its financial, you know, where we've all over the past few years to the board has been doing good things for the community for a long time, and that's why we're, one of the reasons we're able to weather the storm. And we were not throwing in a 0% tax increase because of COVID. We were heading that way from the beginning, so that's, I think that's important for the community to know.
Yes, thank you. Any other discussion?
No, I just want to follow up. I think that, I think it's important to understand that while this year it may be good, I think there's going to be some more tough decisions coming up, and so we just have to keep that in the forefront of our mind, that although we're positioned now to do this, there's going to be other financial challenges ahead, and we're just going to have to weather that together.
I was about to ask that. Are there any projections with what the effect of COVID? I mean, I know that's looking into the future, but do we have any predictions on how that's going to affect the district financially?
I think that, you know, Zach had put together, based on the 2008, which it, I think the the part of this is so difficult because there's so many unknowns, and I think our administration has done the best job that they can to project, and that's where they are sitting at the deficit that they, the number that Keith had mentioned earlier. And there's unknowns about funding, getting additional funding from the federal government, from the state government, or, you know, the, there was legislation that was introduced about property taxes, so we have to be smart, and every single dollar that we spend has to be, at this point, something that is is necessary, because we we don't want to be put in that position where we would ever have to cut programs, and we already are thinking ahead, I think, in that way.
Yeah, I would like to see us focus on the students from this point. We've gotten to a point where we're healthy. I want to focus going forward on what's going to make it better for the students and the staff and and all that. So, you know, I think Ron's right, we have a good, we're in a good position, thanks to some previous boards, but our future, I think our future focus has to be to continue that work, focus on what's important, and keep being smart about using money.
I just wanted to say, happy I am to be, you know, being able to, at least, we all agree on a 0% was, you know, feasible possibly, and we're going to be voting on it. Just the fact that it's in front of all of us, and the administration worked really hard on it, and I know it may have been, some of the community's been such a good sport about these tax increases, these last 30 or 40 years, whatever that count is. I think this brief interlude, if it happens, is much needed.
Absolutely agree. Any other discussion before we have a vote? This is going to be a roll call vote. Anita, would you like to go ahead and complete that? This is going to be a roll call vote. Anita, would you like to go ahead and complete that?
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Akmanowicz?
Yes.
Ms. Weed?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. McCucci?
Yes.
Mr. Reimers?
Yes.
Mr. Spear?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right.
All right, let's do it again next year.
Oh, don't make any promises. Next year maybe, yeah. That's why I asked the, any future projections with COVID. I think we may be in trouble next year.
We certainly will need to be careful, even more so than what we are on a normal basis, that's for sure. All right, I'm going to move on to the next item here. So Anita, I just want to clarify, so there's a couple of these that, can I do them without the roll call, like B, D, and E? Or should I skip to C first and then?
No, you can do B without a roll call, I believe, and C would be the roll call. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Garten.
What is B and what is C? Because my agenda just has, next thing it has is the ETIU education budget, then it has Boucher and James Bill.
B is the suspend, approved suspension of the Upper Bucks Tech School Articles of Agreement, Section 9, Paragraph B and C for the 2021 budget. And then followed by that would be the roll call vote to approve the 2021 Upper Bucks Tech School Budget as amended by the Fund Balance Transfer.
Yeah, I would suggest you do a roll call on both.
Both, okay.
Okay.
And Jeff, you can, Jeff, you can refresh the screen. I had to, I think, I think there were some things that were added. If you refresh, you'll see them.
All right, thanks, Jeff, for the clarification. So we're going to do a roll call vote on the next item, and that's the approval. Excuse me, I'll need a motion to temporarily suspend the UBCTS Tech School Articles of Agreement, Section 9, Paragraph B and C to, I'm sorry? To transfer up to $800,000 from fund balance to the operating budget for use of capital projects only, and B to suspend the reconciliation requirement of Paragraph C for capital expenditures in the 2020, 2021 budget. Dave, did you want to clarify?
No, I just wanted to move on it. I did not wait for you to finish. I apologize.
Oh, that's okay. All right, can I get a motion? Dave, it's your time.
So moved.
Second, Mr. Jackson.
Discussion.
So if anybody cares why we're doing this, we want to pay for an addition from the money that we have in the bank. We have to go through all this to pay it, pay for it with the money we have in the bank, basically.
All right, Anita, thank you for that explanation, Dave. Go ahead with the roll call.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Akmanowicz?
Yes.
Ms. Weed?
Yes.
Mr. McCucci?
Yes.
Mr. Reimers?
Yes.
Mr. Spear?
Yes.
Mrs. Mitchell?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great, thank you for that. And then our next item is also a roll call vote, and this is to approve the 2020, 2021 budget as amended by the Fund Balance Transfer. And this is for the tech school as well, so I would need a motion for that.
So moved by Mr. Jackson.
Second by Mr. Reimers.
Or Reimers.
All right, Chris.
Discussion on this? All right, I need to go with the roll call.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Akmanowicz?
Yes.
Ms. Weed?
Yes.
Mr. McCucci?
Yes.
Mr. Reimers?
Yes.
Mr. Spear?
Yes.
Mrs. Mitchell?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. I'm going to do this one separately because I have a question for the following one. So I need a motion to approve the Boucher and James Bill list for April 2020?
So moved. It's Dave.
I'll second it.
All right, discussion.
A lot of these, it looks like some of these costs were associated with our search to find a baseball field, which never really ended up materializing the season last year. But hopefully we can still find something in the future.
I don't know any board members that are interested in baseball.
Well, you're not paying attention.
I knew that was coming.
All right, just checking and seeing if you're still with us.
All right, well, this one won't be a roll call, so all those in favor can say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstention.
Motion passes with one abstention. So the next one is the technology lease, and the reason I did this one separately was I wanted to clarify because we do have the tech lease options. Do we need to have a motion to vote on one of those options at this time?
I think you do, since you've got options presented to you. How do you know what you're approving?
Right, that's exactly what I was thinking. That's why I wanted to do those separately. Okay. All right, so board members, please take a look at these options here. What you're going to see, and also to the public, is there's three different options. Now, again, the most important thing about this is we did already budget for this, and the costs are going to be spaced out over a four-year period of time. And with the unknowns of COVID and technology being a key aspect of uptime, that this is something that I want everyone to consider. So, so we have option A, option B, and option C. Is there anyone that would like to make a motion on one of these options?
I would like to make a motion on option A.
I would like to second that.
Okay, discussion.
One of the reasons I immediately went to option A is, there's twofold, one, I think, believe Joe's still on the line, but if you recall when these were presented to us, you know, in looking at the various options, A is the most expensive. It gets a little least, let lower in the cost for B or C. However, it was clearly stated that each of these options was already budgeted for, for next year. So it's not like we're having to find money to foot this bill. It was already built into our budget. And it just makes sense right now, especially since we're paying it over four years, to go and get what we need, especially because this is technology, and we find ourselves now in a virtual world. So that was the reason I went with A. Anybody should feel free to, you know.
No, no, I agree with Ron. I agree with Ron, especially in a time where we don't know what we're going to need when we need it. The fact that we have this in the budget, we should go out and get what we need now, so that way we're prepared for whatever comes up in the next, what, four or five months.
And there's a good chance that whether or not we do start in a virtual environment next fall, you know, right now, we were lucky that we were able to give all of our elementary school kids devices to go home with. You know, we have to make sure we maintain them and keep them up and running for the teachers and students. So if we need to keep this going, we can. And there are going to be some parents that even if we do go back to a brick and mortar school, may choose not to. And if they want to utilize Quaker Town's cyber program, these devices are going to be invaluable to them. So that's why I would also choose option A.
Yeah, which is, comes down to 210,000 a year, I mean, the first year, so. And the other options are like 156K and then down to 102K, so. But the challenges are the, option A, Joe's thought about this for a long time, right? This is just like we refresh the, you know, just like Dr. Hoffman refreshes the curriculum every six years, or these are on cycles. The teachers have four-year or older machines, you know. Now, when you need potentially higher horsepower stuff, it's, you know, it's important to keep everybody fresh. And, and the Chromebooks, you know, in case the kids need some, and they're probably pretty hard on them, so. Yeah, I'm in favor of A. Joe put a lot of thought into this, and it's not, it's not packed with excess. It's pretty tight.
And is Joe still there? Joe, can I ask you a question? I know you presented this before, and I tend to agree with everyone that option A is the best. If we go with that, the best option there, A, or the, I should say, the most comprehensive, if we are online for the fall totally, is that going to take care of being online school if we end up being online?
Well, it provides our teachers with new devices that we can support, so we'll be good there. All our students currently have devices. It'll maintain our one-to-one in sixth grade, refreshing those devices, and also providing us 750 devices to continue to support our elementary, because many of those devices are, you know, four, five, even six years old. So if we have to go back into this environment for another, you know, half a year even, I'd be confident that we can deal with these. So yes, I would say I would support it 100%.
Okay, thank you.
And for families that don't have the means to bring their own devices, these are so important for them to be able to keep their education opportunities open.
Yeah, I'm liking A myself, for the record. It's budgeted for, it's money well spent.
I think we're going to need it.
And thank you all. I think we're all on the same page here, and you know, technology is one of those things during a time like this. You know, if you have any old devices, it's really difficult to find the parts that you need to replace those, and the last thing that we want to do is have any downtime in terms of instruction. And so I think we're all on the same page, so that being said, let's go ahead and vote. All those in favor for option A, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion carries unanimously. Joe must be, he's probably a happy guy right now. He did put a lot of thought into that, right?
I do appreciate you guys approving that. I think with the unknowns in front of us, it makes me sleep a lot better knowing we're going to have devices that we can continue to support.
Great.
I think there's a chance we'll all be online this fall, so, yeah.
Yeah.
We can ultimately sell all the buildings.
Yeah.
All right, let's not get crazy.
Let's move on.
Don't get crazy now, John, don't get crazy. All right, all right, we're going to move on to the fiscal consent agenda. And there are several items on this agenda. The approval of Chartwell's Food Service Management Company renewal contract, 2020, 2021. Approve depositories for 2020, 2021 school year. Approve Treasurers' Report for March 2020. Approve March and April 2020 budget transfers. Authorized budget transfers beyond the 2019, 2020 school year. Approve COVID-19 Agreement with T-Mobile Education. And approve the Bucks County Intermediate Unit Technology Pool Council. Oh, there's a lot more in here. LSA for 2021, 2020, 2021. Approve the student, excuse me, accident athletic insurance for the same school year. Suspension of pay-to-play policy for that same school year. Suspension of the meal debt for 2019, 2020. Approval of transfer of food service funds, that's something that we did discuss earlier. I believe it was Keith that someone did discuss that earlier. Approve the class of 2020 Student Activity Account to remain active through December 2020. Approve April Bills List. April 2020 Treasurers' Report. The 2020 commencement celebration with Blue Tech Events. Approve the contract with Sky9 LLC for the commencement of this year. Chartwell's proposed budget and meal prices for the 2020, 2020, 21 school year. Transportation renewal with Plumstead Christian for the same year. Approve contract with advanced protection for the same year. Boy, that is a lot of things on there. So, with that being said, can I get a motion to vote on those items?
So moved.
I'll second it.
All right, discussion.
I just had a question about F. Is the approved COVID-19 agreement with T-Mobile, is that for the hotspots that we were talking about, or is that something else?
That's my understanding. Would somebody else like to chime in?
That is correct.
I was just curious somewhat about, want to understand it. Thank you. So were the devices purchased by the, I can't remember the name of the group now.
QCEF purchased some?
Yes.
And we used, Lisa, you're out there, title money?
Yeah, we used, we used title funding for all of our EL students to be able to cover that as an allowable expense as well.
Okay, so they'll continue to cover, or is this a temporary thing? Are we going to continue to provide the data plan, I guess, for these hotspots moving into the future?
We had to purchase them for one year.
Aren't the data plans free? I thought like Verizon and those places offer free data for low-income people. The hotspots we bought, we loaned out, but the data plans, I thought, were free.
No, there's a cost to these for, for the district, which is what we use, the QCEF funds and the title for funds for. But we did have to buy a year's worth of a plan in order to get, in order to get them. Most places were sold out of them, or where they had, you know, other agreements. So Joe and I worked together to get a really great deal, actually, for a year's worth of plan. So if we are still in a virtual environment, we can continue on with providing internet to those families. And if we're not, we'll be able to collect them back and maybe use them for something else in the future.
$2,400.
Anything else, Joe?
No, I was just going to comment, I'm not sure what was that, but, so there was a device cost and there was the monthly cost. So I'm not sure what, I didn't look at the agenda, but regarding the AT&amp;T, Ron, that if you actually read into that, there was actually stipulations behind that. You already had a have a plan. They weren't just handing out hotspots, they were giving you data usage on an existing plan.
But we really should thank the Ed Foundation for providing those devices and providing the money.
Absolutely. All right. Any other discussion on these items? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, the motion carries unanimously. We're going to move on to our facilities consent agenda. We have several items on this agenda. Deniding Elementary renovation and addition project allowance adjustments. Co-Stars contract with Access Security Corporation. Approve the contract with School Dude Solutions. Approve the contract. So there's two different one, there's the Maintenance Essentials Pro and the Event Essentials Pro. There's a contract with Suppression System. Also with Frank Environmental, Western Pest Services, Security Service Company, Kinsol Airways, Advanced Door Service, Strategic Account Services, Cleanzoid, Environmental Control Systems, BDU, Simplex, JCI, Strategic Account Services, DVL, Siemens, Armstrong Installation. So I'll need a motion to vote on those items.
So moved.
Ron Jackson, Jane, you want to go ahead?
Yeah, I just said so moved. Do you want a second?
I'll second it, Ron Jackson.
Alan, don't we need a public comment for that?
So what, the way that we've been actually doing this is, we have been doing two, we've been doing two public comments for this meeting instead of the typical setup. And I wanted to make sure that I, for the, for the fiscal one, since it was a big vote for the budget, that we did have those in. I don't, I'm going to be willing just to guess that we don't have any additional public comment at this time for those items. Does anybody, Terry or Anita, have you had, guys had anything that actually came in for that?
I have not. I have nothing either at this time.
And just as a bit of a background for some of the newer board members, Dr. Harder or Zach, if you want to chime in real quick, most of these items, if you look at them, are our annual month, or summer maintenance for our buildings. for our buildings. I mean, there's a whole list of expenditures that are about to drop and, you know, five thousand here or ten thousand there, what have you. Uh, but we go through this annually when the buildings close down and we do a lot of summer maintenance. Uh, Zach, am I correct in saying that a lot of these?
It's not even just, yeah, it's not even just summer maintenance. It's, it's annual maintenance on our buildings and various components of our buildings. Rob works with, um, these vendors every year and he switches some of them out year to year depending on service costs, relationships, proprietary, um, pieces, uh, you know, for example, Siemens can only work on Siemens equipment. So, um, we started this process a couple of years ago for transparency purposes, just to make sure the board was approving all of these. They're, they're sort of quasi-contract agreements. Um, some of them are, you know, just bill as you go, as Rob calls them. They come in and service various, um, components of our facilities and by doing these agreements upfront, we can normally get better pricing throughout the year because they know we're committed to them as our, our vendor.
Yes, so, so that, uh, I think it was just a matter of, I wanted to make sure that, uh, we were following the proper procedures. I know we had done a, uh, public comment before. And I wanted to make sure that we were following that same procedure and we weren't missing an opportunity for the public to comment. That was what I was asking.
Um, Rob, do you have anything to add since most of these?
Um, yeah, just building what, what Zach was saying there, like the Simplex, the, the JCI, the Siemens, that's our fire alarm monitoring and security monitoring. That's year-round services. And I like the DVL, we have two accounts with Denver High School for the air conditioning unit for server room for Joe and also at the District Service Center Building. So some of these are annual services, some of them are quarterly services, some of them are yearly services.
And is there some that, since the buildings haven't been used, like maybe we can skip a quarter service or like, uh, looking at the contract with BDU for, um, you know, servicing the pumps for the geothermal. Obviously, they run all year, but, um, since the buildings are empty, if there were any problems that came up to it, you pretty much have a large window to be able to repair them. Or do you believe that these preventative maintenance schedules are pretty important to maintain?
I would maintain these because the fee is minimal. I mean, especially you got some of these big pumps, it could be thirty thousand dollars for a pump. It's not worth trying to save just a little bit of money that, you know, if they're not running that hard. So I would recommend continuing the schedules as, as we have them set in place.
Yeah, this is, this is like we're cleaning thirty buildings. We're trying to maintain our infrastructure of the mechanical systems in these buildings. And whether kids are there or not, those mechanical systems are running, you know?
Correct.
Yeah, I agree with that. We need to, I, I think we need to continue with, with making sure that the infrastructure is kept up to speed. My only issue is the name of the company, School Dude. What a name.
I'm ready to motion to approve.
Vote has already been made, right?
Yeah, that, we just need to have a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay, um, still, do we have any more? Are we gonna continue? Do you think that we're gonna continue the process of public comment to, you know, be basically like first email, people that email us or sign up ahead of time?
As long as there's nobody making any kind of public comments at all, I still think for expedience sake, just leave it to the beginning to the end. I mean, it's nine thirty.
Yeah.
And it's a virtual meeting. Now, you know, no offense, Dr. Harner, but once again, the superintendent's report took two hours, but.
All right, cool. I just wanted to check in.
Should be left to, to beginning of that. It really should.
Okay, it's a little bit challenging. So we're, we're working through this as best as we can. Just wanted to check in with you guys because, you know, Brian did mention that. So, all right, we're gonna move on to the human resources consent agenda. We have the ratification of the Quespa Agreement. Approval of extension of business manager COO contract, which we did discuss. Uh, professional staff, support pay, unit pay, game worker rate change and substitute staff. So I'll need a motion to vote on those items.
Can I, um, make a motion? To? Yes. To pull item number C for a separate ceremony, I mean discussion. If I said that right.
All right, can anyone want to second that?
I'll second it. Chris Spear.
Okay, discussion.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure to highlight the wonderful job Zach does. I don't want it buried in.
That's, you mean V?
He wanted to pull C.
If the one about.
Are you gonna pull it to vote on it separately? Or are you, I mean, you can still make comments.
Yeah, during our discussion, you can still law it him.
That's, yeah, okay. That's all I wanted to do. I didn't want it just to go zip past it.
No, no, we got a couple of things to make discussion on. Don't worry.
Then I retract that.
All right, any other, so, uh, so then I'll need a motion to actually vote on all those items.
So moved, John.
I'll second it, Mitch.
Discussion.
You're up, John.
Yay. Yeah, so I didn't want it to just be, uh, the letter C and there's that Zach. You're a phenomenal asset to the district and, um, it's always a pleasure working with you. And I'm glad that, uh, we're able to make this ex- extension to keep you hanging around these parts, especially because you're also my neighbor, sort of, at the back.
Yeah, I want to take a moment also, uh, I, I was flipping through the, the video. Individuals still online. I saw the Jan still there. Hi, Jan. Uh, I just want to acknowledge, uh, Quespa and everything they mean to us as a board and the district. Uh, we had some wonderful, uh, pizza dinners over the last few months and, uh, they were nice enough to save all the candy for me. I really appreciated that. Um, uh, look forward to doing it again next time. Uh, breaking bread with our friends and our family. So, uh, thanks a lot, Jan.
Yeah, I just want to echo what John says regarding Zach. I mean, he's always a pleasure to work with. He's on top of things. I think this, he's a, he's an absolute asset to this district. And, uh, and he's a pleasure to work with, so.
Thank you all for those, those comments and, uh, I'd have to agree with what you all said. Appreciate the, that we were able to come to an agreement with Quespa and Zach is amazing. Let me just tell you, as a new board member coming in, he made sure that I was prepared and really was patient with all my questions and it's just a real pleasure to work with. So happy that we're able to provide that extension.
Now, I would be remiss if I did not law it over Zach too. He has been absolutely fantastic. I swear. Same, I echo what Catherine said. As a new board member, um, any questions that I had, he was very receptive and thoughtful. Thank you very much, Zach. Kudos, man. Great job.
And for the record, he got five minutes of praise and now we can beat him up for the next couple of years.
That, this is the payment for those praise. So thank you as well. You, you have been a big help to me coming into here. And you continue to be a big help for me moving forward.
Ditto.
All right, guys. Thank, thanks for all that, that, hopefully that, that, uh, makes you feel really, really good, Zach, because you know what? You do a lot of really good things for our district. So that being said, let's go ahead.
We're done now, Caitlin.
Vote. I know, I know, I move, I'm getting there. So all those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I was trying to just set a record, you know, with trying to, uh, beat Dr. Harner with his superintendent report being so long. I was trying to make sure that I had as much time there so I could beat him in that, in that way. You know, it's competition.
Keep going, it's gonna flip over to Lamar.
I'm just kidding. Okay, so the, uh, policy and program items presented for a vote, we have the approval of a contract between Pennhurst Group and, uh, another contract between this, between the, so there's two different contracts with that same company. Uh, the BCIU Early Childhood Programs Memorandum, memorandum. Uh, the subscription for Navigate three sixty, the contract between Bucks County Intermediate Unit, um, and Quaker Town Community School District for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Can I get a motion to vote on that?
So moved, Dave.
Second, John.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And the motion carries unanimously. So we have some information items. We have, uh, some enrollment reports that you can take a look at. We also have some joint RFPs for upcoming contract renewals. You can take a review of that at your own leisure as well as the Nighting Elementary School Financial Update. Is there any new board business that anyone would like to present? All right, do we have any final public comment?
Whoops, I did have one thing I wanted to bring up, but I was muting and I'm muting myself the wrong way. Um, we do have a comprehensive goals meeting coming up that is open to the public. And I did want to announce that, um, uh, that possibly that could be a link to that meeting could be set up on the website for people to find easier.
Yeah, that's a good point. We do have that coming up and so maybe we should take a look at. I'm, I'm not sure what's on the website for that. But if we don't have anything that's, uh, posted easily, then we should take a look at that.
Is Anita gonna send out an invitation to all board members for that?
Is this the comprehensive plan meeting that you're talking?
It is.
I believe, uh, Nancy Anne's, uh, Secretary Eileen was handling the updates on that, but I'll follow on that with her.
I'm not sure the comprehensive, was the comprehensive plan, oh, that is, that is a public meeting, isn't it? Dr. Harner, is that correct?
Yes, this is a meeting for comprehensive plan. I just want to be clear with you, Chris. You talking about superintendent goals?
No, I was, uh, comprehensive planning meeting. Remember, we were gonna have that whole workshop with teachers.
That's on the twenty-first.
Yes.
May twenty-first.
Yes.
And we'll have an open link for folks to, uh, that are on, on the, for all the board to participate and all the people who signed up through Nancy. Uh, Ms. Edwards, could you please, do you have anything to say?
Um, the first step was we verified, um, whether the people that originally had signed up were still um, willing to participate in a virtual environment. So I believe we've gotten all those RSVPs back um, at this point. So we'll be able to, uh, send out the, the Zoom link. We're, we're not gonna send it out um, until the day of the meeting. Um, just because we don't want there to be any more possibility for, you know, unfortunate things to happen during the meeting. Um, so, but I, I'll, I'll check with Eileen tomorrow to, to see the final list of everybody that's confirmed.
And maybe the, the, um, I, I know there was some teachers at least expressing interest in being part of it before. I don't know how many of them RSVP'd or anything, but maybe even bring it back out to the building principals to send out.
Looked at it again today, but everybody that indicated they were interested before was included this time.
Okay.
So, and if additional people want to, um, sign up, then they, you know, they can do that.
It's the twenty-first, right? But that's the same day as the next tech board meeting too, I think.
Yes, it's, uh, May twenty-first.
Yeah, okay.
All right, thanks, guys. So we have some, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, so I was just talking to my son and he wants to, uh, give a shout out to all his teachers, but more importantly, he wants Dr. Harner to know that he wants a football season next year. So I told him I would add that.
We all do, we all do.
Throw down a gauntlet.
We'll see what happens. Um, all right, so, oops, did I cut someone off? Tell you, Zoom is tricky.
You really don't want to, you know, um, continue on, come on.
All right, all right, all right, ready to play, ready to play. Okay. So, uh, some items on the calendar coming up.
We did, excuse me, we did for the, the ending public comment. Terry just sent me an email saying she got, uh, one public comment.
Okay.
Coming in.
Okay, please go for that.
Okay, um, the question is, how does the district plan to increase direct instruction in these virtual classes if the schools remain online in the fall? If there are twenty-five students in a class, how will it make it possible that all students learn?
I don't know if someone wants to answer that from the administrative team. One thing that the public probably should know and understand is that we are preparing for the worst possible key scenario of being fully online. And we're also looking at some hybrid models. Right now, we didn't feel it was the best decision to grade and put that pressure on a lot of parents when we, you know, went really quickly to an online curriculum. So that's not gonna look the same if we happen to do this in the fall. So, um, I don't know if, if Lisa, if you wanna add on to that or Dr. Harner?
Lisa, I'll, I'll give you, um, first shot at it.
Okay, um, so thank you for that question. And I know that's a question that, um, we've been receiving a lot and, and honestly, one that we all have as well. Uh, we, I think, uh, Dr. Hunter mentioned earlier in the meeting that we are working to establish some task force committees. Uh, one of which, which actually centers around virtual instruction and, um, looking at those very questions, how, how can we make sure that it's equitable for all students? How can we make sure that we maintain, uh, rigor in those classes, that we can build relationships with students? Um, that's also very important, especially beginning a year um, with new students. So those are all things that, that we are working through and looking at and, um, know that we are, you know, that we, we will be continuing to do that, um, even if we aren't exactly sure how we'll be starting the school year because it's going to be critically important that we have our classes ready to go in the event that we need to utilize them that way.
If we were to see an increase in our request for virtual schooling for the next school year, are we prepared to handle it? Like if it, if we are, if we're supposed to meet in person because our zone is proper, but more parents want to send their way, students the way of the virtual school for next year, are we prepared for an influx?
We have our own ver- virtual model. And Lisa, you want to explain that?
Sure. So we actually have a memorandum of understanding with our, uh, teachers' union that would probably need to, uh, receive some updates in this given environment because it's not written certainly for the number of students that could potentially be looking at a cyber option. But we are very fortunate to be able to use, um, our in-house teachers for cyber options if they choose. And then we do have outside providers that we use currently for some students in classes that we can't offer in-house that, um, we've seen great success with. And obviously at a, a great cost savings to the district. So we, we would absolutely be prepared to do that in one way or another, working with our teachers.
All right, thank you for that. Um, yeah, just so the public knows, you know, we realize that some people in the fall may be comfortable putting their kids back. In fact, some parents may be super ready to drop their kids back off at the schools. Um, uh, and we know some are not gonna feel comfortable with that. So we're preparing, preparing for every single situation. And, um, there's gonna be more updates to come along as this goes. We have really been focusing on our current year and instruction, but we understand and we are preparing for that. So, um, that being said, I think that really, uh, wraps up our meeting. I would just need, if there's any final comments?
I have nothing.
Need a motion to adjourn.
I make that motion.
Second, Dave.
Any discussion?
Good night. Dave has a son.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 I'll vote, but I'm.
Have a good night, everybody.
Good night, guys. Thank you all for joining us.
Good night. Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Take care, guys. And gals.